Mr. Mayor, I believe we're ready.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's special meeting, which is a hearing on the housing element. We want to say welcome back to everybody who's here tonight in public, and we want to let all of the viewing public know that City Hall is now open. When we have public meetings, you're free to come in, and we just ask people to conduct themselves in any way that they feel healthy with doing. So if you're more comfortable staying home, participating by Zoom or by telephone, you're welcome to continue doing that. So there are several ways to participate here tonight. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk, or if you're participating remotely, you can use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and you'll be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that item. Tonight, there's only one item. This item is a hearing, but it's actually just for update, for council comments, for discussion on the housing element as it progresses. There will be no voting tonight. So now we're ready to move on to the first item. It is draft 2023-2031 Housing Element for a public hearing. We're going to ask our members of staff here tonight, Zachary Dahl and Manira Sandir. I think Zachary is going to start with presentation.
Through the mayor, if we could take roll call.
Oh, sure. Madam Clerk, could we please have roll call?
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Gothels?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pappin?
Here.
And Mayor Benia?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now over to you.
Good evening, Mayor Benia, members of the city council. I am Zachary Dahl, deputy director with the city's Community Development Department. And here with me tonight, we have Planning Manager Manira Sandir, and then remotely, our housing consultant Diana Elrod. Before we get started, I did want to acknowledge the Housing Element team that has been working on the housing element, and believe it or not, we have been at this since the end of 2019. So there are a lot of work has gone in to the effort and drafting the document that is here before you this evening. We have our staff team made up of members of the Housing and Planning Divisions within Community Development, as well as our housing consultant Diana Elrod. We also have support from Good City Company with Nicholas Hamilton, and then through our regional planning collaborative 21 Elements, we've been working with them and their consultant root policy as well. So there's a lot of members supporting this effort here this evening. So for tonight's agenda, we will start with our staff presentation, provide for clarifying questions, take public comment, and then move into council discussion and comments where we are looking for direction. And we have identified four areas to break up the discussion, as there's a lot of content in the housing element here that's before you. And then at the end of the presentation, we'll provide an overview of next steps in this process. So our objectives for tonight are receiving the information on what has gone into the draft housing element, receiving public comments, and then facilitating a council discussion with direction on the draft housing element that's before you. And as was noted, a motion is not required this evening. The final draft housing element will come back before the council later this year. So for an overview of tonight's presentation, we will start with an overview of the city's regional housing needs allocation and our adequate sites inventory, a discussion of our quantified objectives, our affirmatively furthering fair housing analysis, a summary of our public participation and the outreach efforts that we've been working on, a summary of the goals, policies, and programs that are in the housing element, and then conclude with a summary of public input that we have received to date, as well as the planning commission's comments, and then, as we noted, a timeline of the housing element moving forward from here. So a little bit of background, as was noted, we started work on this effort at the end of 2019. It is a required element of our general plan, but this particular element does require certification by the state's Department of Housing and Community Development, or referred to as HCD. Well, the general plan has a 20-year planning horizon. A housing element focuses on planning for an eight-year housing cycle. The housing cycle that we're currently planning for is referred to as the sixth housing cycle, and it will cover the years 2023 to 2031. The Housing Element draft was originally published on April 6, and that started our 30-day formal public review period, which concluded on May 6. However, we have been taking comments prior to this date and will continue to take them up until the document is ready for adoption by the city council. Overall, the Bay Area was assigned a regional housing need allocation of over 440,000 housing units, of which San Mateo needs to plan for approximately 7,015 units. So the breakdown of those units includes four categories, three below-market rate categories of very low, low, and moderate, and then our above-moderate or market-rate category. And as you can see, the distribution of that 7,000 units over those four categories. So the city's RENA strategy and its implications, as we got that we're assigned these numbers, and as we begin to plan for how we would realize this growth, we focused on conservative production and density assumptions for our housing sites. To meet our affirmatively furthering fair housing, or AFFH, requirements, we did ensure, we did look at spreading these sites around the city while also focusing on our 10 study areas to align with our general plan update, which is running parallel to this process. Given that the city of San Mateo is predominantly built out, the majority of the sites on our sites inventory are focusing on higher density and mixed-use projects and redeveloping existing underutilized parcels. And one of the features of our sites inventory is that we are utilizing existing land use and zoning density. So no rezoning would be required to achieve the capacity outlined in our sites inventory. And we also are running parallel at a slightly faster pace than our general plan update, which is looking to conclude by the end of 2023. And depending on the final adopted version, we do anticipate further density capacity with the land uses that go with that general plan update. We do also want to acknowledge a significant number of pipeline projects, both under construction and under review and/or approved projects. And so a chunk of our RENA allocation is already underway. And we did also want to note that we do have a reliance on ADUs, but it's a very small percentage of our sites inventory, and we are not playing relying on any SB9 projects to meet our requirements. This is just a brief overview of kind of the larger projects in our that are currently in the pipeline. Under construction, most notably is our Kikue Crossing 100% Affordable project, and a project that's approved but has not yet started construction is Concar Passage, and that mixed-use project does include over 960 new housing units. So the methodology that went into developing our adequate sites inventory, we initially developed the site topologies, and we did vet them with HCD. So we have been consulting with the state as we've gone through the process to ensure that we are developing a methodology that's defensible and consistent with state guidance. And as we noted, this is a mathematical exercise to demonstrate capacity, and in this case, we are looking to plan for that those 7,000 units plus a buffer. The allocation per site is based on the city's RENA allocation. So in this case, 25% of our total RENA is very low, 15% low, 17% moderate, and then 43 at above percent at above moderate. Since this is a demonstration of capacity, this does not mean that each site will be developed at these exact numbers, but it does demonstrate how we could achieve those numbers. And it is worth noting that we, over this eight-year cycle, not every site on our inventory will be developed with housing, and we do anticipate sites that are not in the inventory to also be developed with new housing. So just further going through the methodology component of this, we did an extensive parcel-by-parcel review of each site, and we ranked them for development potential. We looked at historical redevelopment trends. An example of this is that older, lower-density office sites do have a high likelihood or high potential for redevelopment into housing. We also met with developers to understand what they look at when they're looking to acquire and redevelop sites. And then we also reviewed real projects in the density achieved versus the zone density, and that was also factored into our assumptions. And one of the things we did find is because for a city of our size, we do have a relatively low maximum density at 50 units an acre, and what we found as a result of that was that projects were generally developing at above 100% of density through the utilization of state density bonus law. And so based on this, we were able to use this assumption, and we have also confirmed with HCD that this is a defensible approach to come up with these assumptions for larger sites, and then we use a smaller potential density for smaller sites. This is a map that shows the spread of where each of our opportunity sites are located around the city. You can see there is kind of five clusters that we've identified, but really, we do have sites located in all areas of the city. And this was purposeful, but there is a lot of alignment between these sites and our 10 study areas within the general plan update. So here is a breakdown. This is the sites inventory, as was published in April, and you can kind of see how the units break down by each of these opportunity areas and by ADUs, and then in the rest. And as you can see, we do have a potential to develop up to 10,900 units. So that does give us a significant buffer above our RENA allocation of 7,015 units. And then we did also want to overlay our housing sites map with our, this is an opportunity map that identifies the resource areas within the city. You can see we range from moderate to high and very high. And so you can see a significant portion of our sites are located in our high resource area, and we do have some sites that are located in our highest resource area. And this does speak to one of the AFFH requirements of ensuring that our sites are included in our high and highest resource areas. I did also want to note that since the publication of our housing element, we, based on comments we've been receiving, we have already updated our sites inventory, and this is illustrative of the fact that our sites inventory is going to continue to evolve, because none of these properties are static. There's development applications, any number of circumstances that may change over time, including ownership. And so this, we have already updated, and to illustrate this, based on feedback, we have removed 11 sites from our inventory, added six new ones. And then in the next slide, we'll show you kind of an updated version of our sites inventory. And so we do anticipate this list will continue to grow and evolve, and you'll see probably a slightly different version when this comes back to you in the fall. So what you can see actually is based on these refinements, our very low buffer has actually increased from 14% to 20%, and in all areas, we do have meaningful buffers. And it is worth noting, a buffer is not required, but HCD recommends a buffer of somewhere between 15 to 30%. So you can see we're within that range or exceeding that range in all four of our housing income categories. So moving on to the next topic, which is quantified objectives, and it's important to note here that this is a different exercise than how we look at the sites inventory. Quantified objectives focus on realistic development that could be realized over this upcoming eight-year housing cycle. And they represents a ceiling or a floor, not a ceiling, on development potential. But the goal is that it's realistic, it's quantifiable. And this exercise does not need to show that we meet or exceed our RENA in this for this particular case. And in this case, the very real challenge is the resources that it takes to develop, particularly our affordable units. And I think in this case, if we look at an average per unit cost of $700,000 per unit, and this was based on 2021 numbers and is likely already probably realistically low to develop a new housing unit, we would need at least $2.8 billion to develop all of the affordable units in our RENA allocation. So that provides a little bit of context of the challenge that we will have in realizing the affordable units that are in our upcoming RENA allocation. And so for this exercise, we did identify both units that could be realized through conservation and preservation, new private development projects, as well as new city-funded projects. And so in these, for conservation, preservation, or future city-funded projects, these are numbers that are not necessarily directly reflected in our sites inventory. So there is, it's not an issue that these numbers do not align with our sites inventory, because the intent of this exercise is different. So moving to the affirmatively furthering fair housing, or AFFH, analysis, Assembly Bill 686 requires all public agencies to provide an AFFH analysis as of the beginning of 2019. And this analysis includes an assessment of fair housing, outreach, segregation and integration, opportunity disparities, disproportionate housing needs, and racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty. Our housing element is required to administer programs and activities relating to housing and community development in a manner that will affirmatively further fair housing, and it should not take any action that is inconsistent with this obligation. So, and this was where the city, the housing team collaborated with 21 Elements and their consultant root policy. We did identify a number of challenges in the city of San Mateo, and this included racial and ethnic minority populations that were disproportionately impacted by poverty, overcrowding, cost burdens, and homelessness. It did identify the northeastern neighborhoods of the city as being most impacted, and it did identify that there were discrimination complaints that had been filed in the city based on disability and race. So based on these findings, the housing element needs to, is focused on addressing the following areas, and this will be, we can elaborate on this further as part of our discussion in the goals, policies, and programs section. But overall, we are, the housing element focuses on new programs to reduce barriers to housing, particularly in higher resource area, opportunity areas, promoting increased housing supply, focusing on conservation and improving assets in neighborhoods of higher poverty, and protecting residents from displacement. As part of this, both for to meet our AFFH requirements and just overall to meet other state requirements, as part of our housing element preparation, we had a very robust public participation and engagement strategy. This included 19 public and community meetings, five intercept pop-up events, four surveys, community engagement through 21 Elements. We included an updated Housing Element Update website, and we did two mailers, one of which was targeted specifically to renters. And then we, particularly to meet our AFFH requirements, we did include outreach that was in multiple languages, including Spanish and in some cases Chinese. We did focus on mail, physical mailers to every address citywide and not just property ownership to ensure we are reaching all residents. We also participated in virtual countywide meeting this past summer that was conducted in Spanish. We focused some of our pop-up events at grocery stores in North Central and Shoreview, and then we included flyers in both English and Spanish. And most recently, we included this engagement at the city's April Extravaganza event. And then we've also included a fair housing survey. We participated in a countywide fair housing survey that was conducted by 21 Elements. So what did we hear from this community outreach and engagement? An overarching issue was expanding the supply of affordable housing, focusing on housing for service workers, looking at missing middle, continuing and increasing outreach and education to tenants and landlords, looking at ways to streamline and simplify the development review process, establishing programs to address fair housing and equity, and focusing housing that was transit-oriented to support our transit corridors. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Manira, who will pick it up from here.
Thank you, Zach. Good evening, honorable councilmembers. Manira Sandir, Planning Manager. So moving on, the other required components of the draft housing element include analysis focused on the governmental and non-governmental constraints that can prove an impediment to the production of housing. The draft housing element also includes existing and potential housing resources, which can include funding sources as well as programs that can support housing efforts. We also included an analysis of the climate change context, as well as the energy conservation requirements. This was specifically also tied in with the city's Climate Action Plan. And the draft also included a review of the prior housing element. So where are we coming from? What are the accomplishments that we have? And some of the challenges? And to elaborate on the accomplishments, in the last housing cycle, 2,500 units were completed until last year. There was an inclusionary requirement that was adopted by the city council for 15% affordable units to be included in housing projects, and a number of process improvements and code amendments were also completed. And I would like to add that there are always ongoing programs as well that are managed through the Housing Division as part of the housing element. So with that, under the draft housing element, we also presented back in February, goals, policies, and programs, and an approach to that, to a joint study session before council and the commission. At that point, we had presented the three Ps concept, which focused on production, preservation, and protection of housing. Subsequent to that meeting, and based on the community input, staff recommended adding two more goals that are focused on promoting outreach and education, as well as Goal Five, which is affirmatively furthering fair housing. Granted, Goal Five is a requirement of the state, however, we feel, however, we feel that, oh, sorry. However, we feel that it determined, it needs a specific. Thank you. No worries. All right. No more echo. Sorry about that. Okay. All right. Thank you. So we felt that affirmatively furthering fair housing is a key goal of the city and should be called out as such. May I continue? Okay. So just to brief, to briefly elaborate on each of the five goals, Goal H1 is focused on production of new housing at all income levels with the focus on affordable housing. And primarily, this can be achieved with two approaches. One is the city's direct involvement in housing production. So for example, using public funds to build more housing. An example of that is Kikue Crossing. You know, we also can leverage our commercial linkage fee to provide more units, partnering with nonprofits to establish pre-approved ADU plans, which streamlines the development of ADUs, using local ordinances to require developers to create more affordable units by providing them with incentives. And then separately, we also feel that the city can encourage and streamline housing development through the adoption of objective design standards, updating the zoning ordinance to create minimum densities for mixed-use housing projects, developing policies for middle, missing-middle housing that can also be tied to Senate Bill 10, which looks at streamlining small-scale housing projects, and then also streamlining the application review and processing timelines for projects that propose additional affordable units. Goal H2 focuses on preservation of existing housing that is affordable to lower and middle-income residents. And the intent here is to prevent conversion of existing affordable units from becoming market rate by renegotiating agreements with existing housing managers, using public funds to either acquire the units or require developers to replace any lost units, indirectly preserving affordable housing by improving the quality of life of residents to prevent displacement, and then incentivizing upgrades and providing funds, capital improvements, as well as resiliency project funds to rehabilitate units, provide for accessibility modifications, energy efficiency changes, and then also protect against threats that are posed by climate change. Goal H3 focuses on protection of current residents to prevent displacement. And here, the city focused on, or staff focused on preventing gentrification and displacement through protection of lower-income residents, addressing homelessness, and increasing shelter capacity, affirmatively funding and supporting outreach services for at-risk renters and those who are facing fair housing challenges, and prioritizing special-needs tenants in below-market rate units. Staff also looked at exploring a rental registry, which has been a high priority of this council, to track rents and monitor trends in evictions, and undertaking several other actions to affirmatively further fair housing in the city. Goal H4, which was a new goal that was added, looks at promotion of community engagement and public outreach. And here the emphasis was on increasing access to and awareness of housing programs through use of new technology, providing education and information on regulatory requirements and specific programs, as well as protections that are offered locally, regionally, as well as by the state, to improve access to housing. well as by the state, to improve access to housing for all income groups and special-needs communities. Supporting countywide rental waitlists to centralize occupancy of BMR units is another of the programs that's in this goal. And then finally, conducting public outreach in a diversity of methods, forms, and to reach, you know, as many residents as we can, and we try to do that throughout this process as we develop this draft housing element as well. And finally, Goal H5, which is the affirmatively furthering fair housing goal, includes a fair housing action plan. It does include and cross-reference items that are interwoven throughout the other goals, and that's because we felt that it's important to relate those two. The AFFH action plan is focused on protecting groups with disparate housing needs in the city, especially in the areas that have high rates of poverty. And examples of these income groups include the Hispanic community, as well as the single-female heads of household. The focus of this goal is also to protect persons with disabilities who experience housing discrimination due to low economic opportunity, as well as the failure of landlords to provide reasonable accommodation. So a number of the programs that are identified in our goals, policies, and programs are housing initiatives that are already underway, and some of these, such as the objective design standards, looking at SB 9 regulations and evaluating SB 10, including a minimum residential density for mixed-use projects, updating our community benefit and density bonus regulations, updating renter protections, and then also our streamlining and process improvements will further all the goals that are outlined in the draft. As Zach mentioned previously, this draft was available for public comment through May 6th, and 18 comments were received during this 30-day public review period. Some of the key comments focused on concerns regarding the projected population increases that goes with this projected housing increase due to the lack of resources and particularly water supply. Staff is conducting additional analysis in the draft. We are following up with the two cities' water providers and are identifying some quantitative analysis to demonstrate how there would be adequate water available to support this growth. One of the comments focused on negative impacts to R1 zoning, and this is a theme that had emerged even at other meetings. Of course, through the general plan update process, the city council is focusing new housing growth in proximity to transit and other amenities, so therefore, there are not anticipated to be any negative impacts to the R1 zoning district. Public comments were also focused on reevaluating sites inventory and redevelopment potential of listed sites. So this was focused on whether or not staff has used the appropriate methodology or needs to account for additional densities to meet the RENA allocation. And as Zach mentioned, the sites inventory is a list that's an evolving list and is constantly being reviewed and updated based on these comments. There were also suggestions to upzone R1 zoning and also removing Measure Y and rezoning. As Zach pointed out earlier, including for single-family neighborhoods is not necessary to meet the city's RENA obligations. We focused our sites inventory in the 10 study areas that are identified in the general plan, and therefore, there is no necessity to upzone R1 zoning. And then finally, a number of comments were focused on protections for the disabled, at-risk low-income families, and promotion of racial equity. And these comments are being reviewed carefully, and the goals, policies, and programs are being updated as appropriate. Before I move on to the Planning Commission's input, there were several public comments that have been received since the close of the public review period, and those are also included with, as an attachment to the staff report. Many of them are focused on, again, adding or removing sites from the sites inventory, but then also looking at the local workforce, the construction workforce, as well as displacement as a topic that needs to be addressed. Thank you, Joan. I see you're passing out the public comments. The draft housing element was also presented to the Planning Commission over two meetings on April 26 and May 3, and the Planning Commission provided significant input on the various aspects of the housing element. So I'm going to break it down into four different topics. First, on the sites inventory, the Planning Commission provided feedback on the methodology that was used. They expressed some concerns about the density assumptions, the ADU projections that staff had employed. There were comments from commissioners about property owner intent that was based on anecdotal conversations. There were comments about whether the estimated housing capacity was even feasible based on what kind of development was happening in the city. Comments also focused on the lower-income unit estimates not being realistic, and then a key focus was that no sites were placed in the highest resource areas. To summarize staff's response, staff believes that the sites inventory intent is to demonstrate capacity, not economic feasibility or forecasting where development will occur. And as Zach pointed out, in the sites inventory methodology, this methodology was reviewed by HCD, and we believe that the sites inventory is currently outlined, does demonstrate the capacity to meet the city's RENA allocation. However, we did update the methodology to address some of the outliers that were included in the density assumptions. We are also looking to add site-specific analysis that provides the substantial evidence to support why each site has been added into the inventory. And as I said, as we said previously, it's an evolving list where sites will keep getting added and deleted as more information becomes available. The Planning Commission's input focused also on the affordability, sorry, affirmatively furthering fair housing narrative, and several concerns were expressed at these meetings regarding insufficient information, about overcrowding, gentrification, displacement, as well as the racially segregated areas of affluence. There were comments that expressed concerns about placing affordable housing sites within 500 feet of major thoroughfares such as Highway 101 and 92, and not placing enough housing in the highest resource neighborhoods. One of the commissioners also expressed some dissatisfaction with the city's outreach As mentioned previously, the AFFH is a new and emerging aspect of the housing element. This is recent, there's recent HCD guidance about how to address this very complicated topic, and therefore, the staff focused on meeting the requirements that are outlined under the HCD guidance and provide an adequate summary of the history and challenges associated with affirmatively furthering fair housing. The scope of the housing element is limited in its breadth, in its timeline, it's an eight-year, it has a horizon of eight years, and its applicability, and therefore, staff focused more on realistic targets for meeting the AFFH narrative, and therefore, is... and therefore, we will strengthen the AFFH analysis, however, we cannot address decades of segregation that have occurred in the region. There are also some AFFH requirements that are misunderstood, so again, recognizing that, we have focused our efforts on responding to the HCD guidelines. And then as far as the 500-feet requirement, or rather, the concern of placing housing within 500 feet of freeways, the staff looked at that carefully, and our understanding is that with appropriate mitigation measures, HCD does allow housing to be placed within 500 feet of freeways. There are some sites that the staff has identified in the highest resource areas. However, there are some trade-offs when that occurs, because putting higher-density housing within the highest resource areas may also preclude access to certain services, access to transit, access to grocery stores, and therefore, staff is focused on placing the sites within the 10-study areas, as well as several other sites in the high-resource areas in the city. On the other components of the housing element, the Planning Commission expressed concerns about the quantified objectives. Again, those set realistic goals and maybe less than the RENA allocation, those numbers aren't always aligned. They expressed concerns about the Measure Y constraints analysis, so staff is looking at beefing up that section of the report and will add additional information. And one of the key components, which is, or key constraints that may exist in the city, which is high fees for development of small-scale multifamily, is being evaluated. We did find an error in the fees calculation even prior to the Planning Commission meeting, and we are looking closely at that, and it will be updated. And if it is high, then it will be identified as a constraint, and staff will include a program to address that constraint. On the goals, policies, and programs, a number of concerns were expressed by the commission specific to removing exploratory language and programs already required by state law. The commission wanted additional commitments to go above and beyond the minimum state requirements, removing policies and programs that are duplicative, creating policies and programs that eliminate disparity and overcrowding within one to two decades, increasing density in the single-family zone districts, removing Measure Y, and then exploring public banks and other public funding sources for the development of affordable housing units. In general, staff's response to those comments is that the focus for this housing element cycle is to look at aspirational yet realistic targets based on the available monetary and staff resources. Some of, as mentioned previously, some of the initiatives are already underway, they're identified as city priorities, and the city always has the ability to go beyond the minimum floor that is established in the draft housing, or in the housing element. The housing element is also a contract between the city and the state, and aggressive policies and programs in the draft housing, or in the housing element, may increase the risk of noncompliance. So that is why the city is focused, or staff is focused, on putting achievable policies and milestones within the draft. And finally, we would like to point out that the general plan update also offers an additional opportunity to address the city's longer-term growth and developmental goals. And as noted earlier, the focus here is to allow for additional growth in density in the 10-study areas. These are the timelines of the housing element and general plan. So the housing element horizon year is 2031, the general plan's horizon year is 2040. So there will be additional opportunity in the next housing element cycles to also expand upon the efforts that are being done today under the current housing element cycle. We expect this housing element to hopefully be adopted by the end of this year or early next year. However, it'll depend on what kind of comments and feedback we receive from HCD and how many cycles of reviews occur before HCD. In terms of next steps, so once we receive feedback from the city council tonight, we would go back to the drawing board and update the draft housing element and hopefully submit it in June to HCD for its first 90-day review. Once we receive comments back from HCD, we would take the summer and fall to update the draft and resubmit for the second review as needed, and bring it back to the Planning Commission and the city council for a review and final adoption of the housing element either later this year or early next year. So with that, for purposes of discussion tonight, once the city council receives public comment, we have broken down the topics into these four areas that we can facilitate a conversation on, and again, to reiterate, a motion is not required at this meeting. However, we would appreciate direction from the council and consensus, if there is one, on these different areas. That concludes staff's presentation, and we are here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So now, bring it back to the council, council members' questions. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Gofos.
Can you reiterate for me or remind me the potential consequences of not getting an approved or certified housing element?
Yes, there are a number of potential penalties ranged, starting with noncompliance. So the deadline the state has set to get certified is the end of January 2023. There is an extended grace period of 120 days up through May that will allow for additional time as needed, but ultimately, that does start with potential inability to achieve state funding for, under certain categories. And ultimately, if a housing element is not certified, a jurisdiction risks losing local control for reviewing and approving developments. So there are meaningful consequences if we are unable to get a certified housing element.
Thank you for that. Realistically, do we have clear guidance from the state on what a housing element needs to look like in order to get certified, based on the other cities that have submitted their housing element?
This, there's a lot of evolution that's continuing, and for some prior context, as we included in your agenda report, there were three other areas of the state that had a deadline of last fall to get their housing element certified, and cumulatively, I think there's over 200 jurisdictions there, and under 40% of those jurisdictions are currently certified, so that's 60% of jurisdictions in those three areas that are out of compliance. So it's a meaningful challenge, I think, particularly the area of affirmatively furthering fair housing. The guidance has continued to evolve, and even now, as we work with HCD, we're not always getting consistent guidance on how to approach various topics. So there is a meaningful challenge here in creating a housing element that addresses our local needs and is fully consistent with state law. So it's going to be an ongoing dialogue, and it's evolving.
Those are my two questions, and I appreciate the answers. I think it's helpful to me, it's helpful to, hopefully, the people at home to understand that those are the stakes, and that's the murky water that we're dealing with. I just want to say thank you to both of you and to this whole process. I really appreciate this endeavor that the city has taken on and that we're trying to keep our commitment to our residents. Thank you very much for that.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the staff report and in your presentation, you said that staff was consistently using a conservative methodology to estimate potential development. Can you explain what you mean by that?
So the goal is, is we would rather underestimate rather than overestimate potential development capacity on any given site. And so, as we noted, because of the city's density cap of 50 units an acre, when we're looking at projects that have been approved over the last five to seven years that include housing, the majority, the vast majority of those projects result in a density that is more than 100% of that 50 units per acre. And so, the state guidance has been that we can never rely on density bonus to go beyond 100%, but what that means is that even if we go with 100% density assumptions, that's realistically conservative when we know that projects can achieve 60, or can go 110, 120% of density by utilizing state density bonus. And we do see that there is a strong trend that housing projects utilize state density bonus when moving forward with projects here in San Mateo.
Great, thank you. You also mentioned in the staff report that you're choosing to disregard some, I guess it said anecdotal information and informal conversations about what may happen to this business or that business. Can you explain why you're choosing to do that?
At the core, we are looking to the state for guidance on how to prepare our housing inventory, and the key is to understand, this is an exercise to demonstrate the city has sufficient development capacity to achieve our RENA numbers. And so, circumstances change. Just because a property owner right now says, "I don't have any interest in developing," if there's characteristics that make that site a higher opportunity, maybe it's an underutilized site, there's older buildings, maybe there's a higher vacancy rate, there's nothing to say that in the future, that property owner might not choose to sell, and then a future property owner would be interested in developing. So things like that, and this is where we're also factoring in long-term leases, and that would be a barrier, and I think an example of that is, we were initially looking at the Target site as a potential opportunity site. We weren't necessarily looking to displace Target, but there was a large parking lot that could be redeveloped. But based on the circumstances, the lease, the fact that the Target had indicated a low interest in that, we decided to be most evincible, we would take that site off. So just a conversation alone doesn't necessarily mean a site wouldn't qualify, but all of that information, we want to take in and look cumulatively.
Sure. And another example would be, I guess, when Trader Joes, if you would have asked them if they would be willing to move or leave their lease, they would have probably said no, but then there was a new development, and they were moved, and they were, I guess, they're happy with it because they agreed to it. were happy with it because they agreed to it. And the last question, you know, I, first off, I was personally, speaking for myself, was really cringing when I was watching the planning commission meeting, and I think you guys did a very outstanding job presenting your arguments and your case that you were proving all the work you were doing and showing the work. One of the questions I just had, and this might be for Diana, how many years' experience and how many housing elements have you worked on, Diana?
I've worked on housing elements for all of my 30-plus years of career in California. Not every state has that kind of requirement. And in fact, I was involved a lot in some of the early 1990s rewriting of housing element laws. I also worked for the City of San Jose, so I have kind of both sides of the experience of both being a public employee as well as a, you know, consultant. Right in this cycle, I've done housing elements, three housing elements for Lafayette. I'm doing four full housing elements myself this year. All of my housing elements have all been certified, and I have a very close working relationship with the state, which has really come in quite handy for some of this work. I'm also doing technical advising for the City of Antioch's housing element this time around, as well as the Town of Paradise, which, as we know, pretty much burnt to the ground. And we did some really creative things with their housing element. So my experience is quite extensive between housing elements and other community development-related work.
And that's it? That's all your experience? No? So given...
Yeah!
So given that, and you're working with us very closely, and, you know, during the planning commission session, there was a lot of critiques, like, "Oh, this isn't going to pass," or "That's not going to pass muster," and things like that. Is it your professional opinion that we're on the right track and that, at the very least, if there are a couple of things that, you know, the interpretation changes, we will have time to fix it in the process? And you feel like we're going to get approved, we should stay the course?
Yes. Yes, I agree. And I think that we've, you know, we've done, especially staff has done an exceptional job, especially with the inventory of looking at it and really digging into it to see whether or not we could really justify these sites as being redevelopable within the eight-year period. And I feel confident about the work we've done. I feel less confident about some of the newer reviewers at HCD that've gone from a shop of 15 people to 85. And many of these folks are, you know, may have come from government or other industries, but none of them have done this level of housing element because no one's done this level of housing element before. So it's very much going to be dependent upon our ability to have a meaningful dialogue with HCD when the time comes.
Great, thank you. Those are all my questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Lee.
Thank you so much for all of your efforts. And one of the things that makes San Mateo so great is that our processes continue to evolve and stand up to scrutiny by the public, scrutiny by our commissions and our council. And I think that we've held you all to a very rigorous process, and it's good to hear the ways that the, you know, that a lot of the concerns have been directly addressed and where appropriate, some of the changes have been integrated. So, you know, one of, I think, the fundamental, like, elephant in the room big questions is how, you know, how we are...
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Lee, could you speak a little more directly into the microphone, maybe, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So I think that the elephant in the room question is how the city is prepared to submit a plan that doesn't include rezoning, that will net three times more units than in a previous cycle. I think that that's the question where people are kind of getting lost. And so I was just hoping you can kind of play it out. What if, what if we get feedback from HCD that we can't? Then what happens next? Where does that path lead us in terms of our process, given, you know, given Measure Y and given the deadlines and certification process?
So there's a number of really good questions there, and I think, one, context is important. The factors that were present for the prior housing cycle are very different for this upcoming housing cycle, and I think there's a couple of ones that are worth noting. One is, the beginning of the last housing cycle was marked by coming out of the Great Recession, and there was a significant drop in housing production that played out for really the first half of that housing cycle, because, as you know, entitlement of housing units takes years. And so housing units that were not entitled over that period of the recession filtered in, and development activities, particularly on housing, didn't start until well into this current housing cycle. Another one is the regulatory framework, the myriad of state legislative pieces related to housing that have been adopted over probably the last five to seven years that are now coming fully into effect for this housing cycle, whether it's density bonus, housing by right, any other number of aspects, will significantly impact how housing's approved and the density at which it's improved. And so those are two key factors that aren't present for this upcoming housing cycle that hindered housing production in the last housing cycle. So I think there's, it's important to understand the differences in the development climate in those two areas. And there's always unforeseen circumstances. But the other piece, when the state approaches its review, they aren't going to kind of, they won't do that kind of summary, "This doesn't work, you need to rezone." They will identify specific areas, maybe specific sites, and identify areas where we either need to bolster our methodology, add additional sites, or find new ways to meet arena targets. But overall, between the sites we've identified and the buffer that we've built in, we do have a high degree of confidence that we are really meeting the state's guidance here and have a high likelihood of being consistent with what they want to see in a housing element.
Can I add just one other comment to that as well, which is that in prior housing element cycles, we did not rely on commercially zoned properties where, as we did, we didn't need them because the arena allocation was significantly lower. And so that has changed in this cycle as well. We're looking, we cast the net much wider than we did previously.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Deputy Mayor Pappan, please, go ahead. No, you're safe.
If you could, I think it was Slide 14. Can you go back to Slide 14 for a second? Okay, so, take me through this just one more time. This does show, the pink is where you've identified sites, right?
The pink outlines are all of the sites on our sites inventory.
Okay. And the purpose of this slide was, you wanted to show us that you have identified sites that are in high opportunity zones, right?
Yes, so it's two points. One, to identify that we have sites in all of our resource areas, including our high and even our highest resource areas, and that they're spread around the city.
And they're spread around the city. Okay. Yeah, I found that to be illuminating, so I just wanted you to walk me through it again and make sure I got it. Thank you.
So in my reading, I noticed some places, it said there was a decision made not to ask extensive questions of property owners at this point. And I'm regarding their planned future use, whether they're, you know, thinking they might be interested in changing or based on the condition of their properties, lots of different reasons why we might ask questions. We probably should have a list for something like that. But anyway, one of the things I'm concerned with is that other jurisdictions have received rejection letters based on the lack of sufficient research. They didn't ask questions and, you know, submit a report or a housing element that seemed to have necessary questions answered, right? So why do we think that, given that other jurisdictions have had that difficulty, what makes us think we're okay going forward? I mean, my thinking is, it would be best to go ahead and ask all the questions and submit all the evidence, have the research done, and reduce our chances of having a rejected housing element, which I guess stretches our process out. I know where I read where we're looking at most likely two rounds of submissions, and previously, it was always just like one round. You submit it, it comes back, you do your work, and then usually it got approved. We don't have to go two rounds. So that's my question. Why?
I can answer that. We have to provide documentation to demonstrate that a site is redevelopable within the eight-year planning period. There is no requirement that we, that anybody, that we research every owner of every property and find out whether they have an interest in redeveloping their property. You can do that if you don't have, you don't have any other indication that a site will be, could be redeveloped within the eight years. But for every site in our inventory, we have to go through and give a detailed description of what's on the site, why we think that this is redevelopable, and what, you know, what's the likelihood of redevelopment. And we've seen many, many, many sites that have had existing uses on them be redeveloped for housing. So we have in our toolbag, if you will, plenty of documentation of existing or new developments that are redeveloping previously occupied uses, including, for example, office buildings that are being redeveloped into housing. In fact, that, we did our due diligence in terms of working with developers and asking them specifically what they look for when they want to redevelop something. But there is no requirement that we have to ask every owner whether or not they want to redevelop, because, as Zach appropriately said, some developer may, or an owner may not want to develop today, but a developer who comes and says, "I really want to buy your property from you tomorrow," might change their mind. And so as long as we have documentation, which we feel confident that we do, that we have enough experience of redevelopment of these sites throughout the community, that we should have a pretty solid inventory.
Okay, thank you for that response. So you say we're not required to ask everyone, but it sounds like we should ask some. How many did we ask?
I'm going to leave that to Zach. I know there have been conversations with a variety of owners, and I haven't been privy to those, but I'll defer to staff for that.
I mean, we have some large sites here that somebody might think would be a good question to ask at least those people, so.
Yes, and for all of our larger sites, we have had communications with those property owners or the managers, the representatives of that ownership, and all have indicated interest to varying degrees in redevelopment in the future, depending on circumstances. I mean, some more aggressively. Some sites have actively wanted to be added, even though we chose not to add them, and I think one site is an example where it would require rezoning to do the additional housing they would want to do. And the key here is to identify, just because a site is or isn't on the inventory, doesn't in any way preclude the ownership from pursuing redevelopment consistent with our rules and regulations. But to your question there, all of our larger sites that have a significant number of housing units, we have been in communication with all of those property owners.
Thank you. So that brings me back to another question, then. We've gone through a kind of a construction boom, we've had a great economy, everything was on the upward cycle, and then recently, things have kind of, and interest rates are going way north, sales are slowing down, I'm reading the newspaper today. So we know that things change. And if during that cycle with our much smaller arena requirement, we only provided a very small percentage, really, I think, of the affordable housing we were required to produce, instead, we did really well with the market rate housing, what makes us think that unless we do something to really sweeten the pot, you know, something to make things really interesting for developers, that things are going to be taken up in a way that we're hoping will happen under this cycle with its 300 and over 300% increase in the number of units being called for zoning for development?
I'll start, and then Diana, feel free to chime in afterwards. Overall, yeah, I mean, we are planning, we're projecting. There is no guarantees here. And each year, we are responsible to prepare our annual progress report to the state. And a general plan, the housing element, once it's adopted, does not mean that it's static. You can continue to amend as needed, review, and we can always adopt or amend policies as needed if it turns out they're not aggressive enough. And with a lot of these, there's going to be individual actions, individual items that come before council, where you'll have a chance to weigh in on them and determine, you know what, we need to be more aggressive, we need to change our assumptions. So this is a starting point. We're going to be working on this over the next eight years, and as circumstances change, as events that are beyond our control occur, we'll have to adapt and reconsider as necessary.
So, as we go into this, hoping that we're going to be able to build more affordable housing, which is really the big need here where we live, right? I mean, we hear about the county buying hotels, we hear about the new navigation center. Affordable housing is the big need, but I still don't hear how affordable housing is being addressed to make it more of a priority in this arena cycle. And, go ahead.
The elephant in the room and the real barrier to creating this affordable housing is monetary resources. I mean, as we noted, to build, if the city was going to endeavor to build the affordable units required under our arena, we would need in excess of $2.8 billion. Realistically, we can put some of that burden on private development, but to, we would never be able to fully achieve that just with private development alone. So that's the real challenge, and there isn't necessarily an answer for that.
So you know what makes property land more interesting to developers, right? It's heightened density, right? That's what gives them the ability to have greater outcome for their project, right? How can we plan to do all this work without increasing heightened density, without any zoning changes?
That's where I think our parallel approach, where we have our housing element, which is before you this evening, and then we have our general plan update, which is on a slightly longer horizon, will kind of address that, to some degree, what you're saying. Because, as we noted earlier, the goal of our sites inventory is to demonstrate that we have sufficient capacity. And what we've done, and we feel in a lot of detail with a methodology that's very defensible, is demonstrate that under our existing zoning, we could realize over 10,000 new housing units, which would exceed our arena allocation. Whether that fully achieves the affordable numbers remains to be seen, and as we noted in our quantify objectives, would probably not be able to achieve the below-market rate pieces. But even increasing in density may not guarantee that, because a large share of that burden ultimately falls on public entities to develop that affordable housing.
And how do we finance it? Right, I got it. Yeah. But those are mysteries that we can solve if we come up with some new creative tools. Okay, good. Those are my questions. Thank you. If there are no other questions? Yes?
Do you mind reviewing and outlining how we go about presenting our deliverables on an annual basis throughout the arena cycle?
Definitely. And so you're probably familiar, each March, the city has a reporting deadline, every jurisdiction in the state has a reporting deadline of April 1st each year to present their annual progress report to the state. And the state has a very detailed list of criteria and requirements that we need to report on, and specifically, we need to report on progress towards meeting arena, as well as how we're doing on each of the policies and programs in our housing element. And so each March, we bring that draft APR, or Annual Progress Report, to council for your review and then ultimate approval before we send it off to the state. And so that's our annual check-in to let you know how we're doing on implementing our housing element.
And refresh my memory, are there opportunities to further refine and drill down on the policies? Or are they fixed in stone when we adopt, eventually adopt, the housing element?
There's always opportunity to amend and change, depending on the interest of council. This could happen in any number of ways at your annual goal setting, if you wanted to identify certain areas to re-review. A lot of implementation of these policies and programs requires bringing specifics back to council, at which point you would have an opportunity to review. And then also, when you get the annual progress report, you would have an opportunity to weigh in and provide direction to staff if there's concerns.
Thank you.
So thank you. I also have one additional question. So recently, the council went through and we did our work on the general plan alternative scenarios. through, and we did our work on the general plan alternative scenarios. And in many of those cases, we actually said that we preferred heights and densities that went beyond what's allowed right now. So, is it, you're thinking that that is what might allow us to be able to meet and be able to provide for what we need? Because I think that when a developer sees greater opportunity to make money, they also see, maybe they can provide some, like right now, we have our inclusionary ordinance, right? So we're at 15%. I like 15%, but 15% of more units is more affordable housing, right? So, is that you're thinking that if we go ahead and get our general plan approved the way that we recommend it we'd like to see, then that's going to give us the ability to meet this RINA cycle? Or will it improve our ability to meet this RINA cycle?
I think approve, improve is the key word, because right now, we're demonstrating we do have the capacity within our zoning to meet our RINA, and then adoption of our updated general plan would just further, would increase that buffer in that capacity.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Now, I think, since there's nobody else with a hand up, we'll go to public comment.
We have five raised hands in our remote world, and here in the House, we have our first speaker, Tom Taber.
Tom, could you please tell us your last name, please?
Taber, T-A-B-E-R.
Thank you.
Yeah, I moved to San Mateo in 1952, along with my parents and my brother. And I grew up here, and I'm now a longtime homeowner here in San Mateo. And the major change that I've seen over the last 70 or so years is that it wasn't that long ago that ordinary middle-class people could afford to live in San Mateo. And now it's become unaffordable to most people, because the balance between supply and demand is, has become so out of whack, because we have far more jobs have been created than housing units. So I would suggest that in addition to building more housing, which I do support, we should discourage the construction of more office buildings. I see more office buildings coming up. People are building, are working remotely, yet they're still building office buildings and bringing in more jobs, which tends to exacerbate the issue. Another issue I have is architectural standards. You know, I think beautiful buildings are really important, because they make people feel good about where they live. But when I'm driving down Delaware Street and I see Station Park Green, those boxy, I guess it's called podium plus four buildings, it doesn't really make me feel that good about how San Mateo looks. But right next to that, where the AAA office used to be, there's a beautiful apartment building. And in Bay Meadows, we have the Morgan Building, which is another attractive building. So it is possible to build nice-looking apartment buildings. So I'm wondering if we could raise the architectural standards in San Mateo, so we can have more attractive buildings. Another question I have is about the kind of rental housing that's being built. It, when I look at the plans for new apartment buildings, it's mostly studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units. I grew up in a house with three bedrooms and two baths, and my house has three bedrooms and two baths. And it seems like that's a good configuration for families. So I think we should be providing housing for families and not just single people. And the third point I want to make is about landscaping. When I look at the kind of plants that are being put around new projects, it's always the same generic plants that are planted in landscape all over the country. But we have beautiful native plants right here in the Bay Area. Plants like manzanita, a couple species of cianothus, California buckeye, which I planted in my yard, urba boina, plants which are adapted to the annual drought cycle, oops, well, just let me finish up here, the annual drought cycle, and attract native birds and butterflies. So I would encourage that we put an element in planning to encourage the use of indigenous California vegetation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taber.
Next speaker, with the last three digits of the phone number 203, please unmute yourself. Give it a try now.
Hello?
We can hear you now.
Okay. Good evening, Council. My name is Michael Cholo, and I'm a field rep for local 217, Carpenters 217 here in Foster City. As the city comes up with a plan on how to accommodate 7,000 new homes, the conversation should also be on labor standards and good-paying jobs. I was given the opportunity to enter into an apprenticeship, be provided with job training, healthcare, and a retirement. Programs the North House Carpenters have right now will address our current and future housing needs by providing a local workforce that, that, that does not discriminate on pay for females or males. There is no better time to start talking about that, these opportunities, than now. Labor standards, good-paying jobs, and apprenticeship programs should be discussed at every one of these meetings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Ken Abreu.
Hi, thank you. I'll be speaking and representing the local chapter of the Sierra Club. We sent a comment letter in on this housing element, so I'll just highlight some of the key points there. I think the first thing is, what we've heard is, we're probably going to get our housing element certified. We've got very good consultants, staff's worked very hard. That's nice, but I think, City Council, we've got to worry about, once it's certified, are you really going to get the needed housing actually built? Is it really going to happen? Because you have a very high standard you're trying to meet here, of many, many more units than we've done in the past. And so I think that that has got to be a focus, not just of the housing element, but the general plan, to make sure we can actually build these things. That means streamlining the process. That means funding, which you've brought up before. And funding means maybe changing our zoning, so that we can make properties more financially feasible. Again, affordable housing is what we need. It's not getting built, and we need to get the funding for that. Also, getting to the state and the federal government will be important, I think, to get the funding we need. So that's one message to the City Council. You're going to need to really do much more to make sure this nice housing element, when it finally gets approved, actually leads to more housing, particularly affordable housing. You know, I noticed in the housing element that, that the buffers for affordable were much lower than for the other levels of housing. And again, it's affordable housing we need. If it doesn't have much of a buffer, it means, you know, we're less likely to make it. And those are the ones we need. So again, we need to know how to push and pursue more funding, and streamlining the processes, and, you know, making it more feasible, and more likely that the needed housing gets built, you know. Also, you know, we've, we've talked about the R1 areas not need to have anything done. Of course, you have the ADUs, you have the Senate bills nine and 10, where you can get the missing middle. We shouldn't forget that, but we should also make sure that anything done out of the transit corridors, that we're thinking about how to improve those neighborhoods to give the amenities needed to make them walkable and bikeable, and connecting them to the transit network on El Camino and on the rail. And finally, you need to look at impacts of climate change when you look at this housing. Where is we going to have flooding issues? Where are we going to have wildfire issues? Let's make sure that that's taken into account in these areas as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, it says, call-in user number one. I'm going to allow you to talk. Hopefully, you know who you are. Call-in user number one.
Yes, good evening. This is Karen Harrell, and I guess I am call-in user number one. I appreciate all the hard work that's been done by the, the housing team, the housing element team. And I really appreciate that they have answered so many of the questions that people in the community have brought up, and also made it very clear that there are people involved in this that know exactly what the HCD people want as our process. And I find it very interesting that not only at the Planning Commission level, but also in comments I've heard tonight, it's almost as if we have people who should be part of the team to move this forward, who are almost hoping that it's going to fail. And it seems to me that as someone who lives in an R1 zone, as do many of the people in the city of San Mateo, it's as if we have a target on our zoning areas, and that the only way we can possibly get this thing through is if we make major redevelopment issues within what are currently R1 zones. Even though the housing development team has made it very clear that that's really not necessary, it's really not appropriate. And so I'm puzzled why it is that people are working hard to take out large pieces of land on which you would logically be able to do major redevelopment, so that you can point to trying to redevelop my house? If you're looking for anecdotal information about whether people who own property are interested in redeveloping it, I suggest you come through some of the R1 neighborhoods, and you will hear a resounding hell no. So why are we continuing to look at things that have no prospect of being redeveloped, as if that's somehow a solution? I will make a comment about how the Target site seems to have come out of this. And of course, I didn't follow every turn of the conversation. But anybody who's followed Target will realize that they had a disastrous move into Canada not that many years ago, and had to pull back. They were supposed to go to Hillsdale and had to pull back from that. And their latest financial statements for this year so far are dismal. So if anyone is basing decisions on whether or not that's a redevelopable piece of land, where we could possibly put some additional housing, that's, that's not a reasonable result. That is a piece of land that within eight years could very easily be available, based on the specific tenancy involved there. I am concerned that we are, we've been given RINA numbers that many people still question. The Housing Group has come up with a way to meet those numbers, regardless of whether or not the community in general believes in them. And yet, somehow, we're not willing to accept the fact that this is going to be reasonable. And I strongly encourage you to move forward with what the, the staff has put together, because it seems to be the best way to try to solve the issue for the next eight years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Lisa Diaz Nash.
Good evening, Council. I am on the San Mateo Library Board, but I am speaking as a private individual. I encourage the Council to endorse the recommendations of the Community Development Department's Draft Housing Element Plan. The plan's recommendations do so many things. It demonstrates how San Mateo can achieve almost 11,000 units of new-zoned housing, which meets the required 7,000 RINA units, plus a 56% buffer, as well as all the subcategories for various economic units. Number two, it articulates clear strategies to achieve the five goals of production, preservation, protection, promotion, and affirmatively furthering fair housing, that you all previously approved. We want to be doing that. All of these are critical to the future vibrancy of San Mateo as a city and as a community. And finally, the plan achieves all of this without changing current zoning. It promotes sustainability, it responds to diverse community input, and it uses conservative projections to further increase the likelihood of success. And as it points out, we haven't met several of our housing goals over the years. Having a solid, realistic, and clearly articulated vision, as this one is, of how to achieve our, our requirements through 2031, and integrating this vision into all of the city's development activities and community outreach will greatly increase our chance of success this cycle. We all agree, we have to succeed at building more affordable housing in San Mateo, as all the previous callers have said, for our community, our economy, our environment. So I hope we'll come together behind this draft plan, rather than approve overreach, so that we can look back in 2031 and say, "We finally achieved our housing goals," rather than once again falling short. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you to the staff for all your work.
Next speaker, Carol Steinfeld.
Hi, this is Carol Steinfeld, a resident. I am here to read a comment for Jennifer Martinez, a North Central Neighborhood resident and a fellow member of One San Mateo, a local housing justice group. If this isn't allowed per our process rulebook, we can just call these my comments. She says, "Dear Mayor Benia and San Mateo City Council members, I'm not able to attend tonight's meeting because I'm touring some of the new affordable housing developments in the county. Thank you for allowing someone else to offer my comments on the draft housing element. San Mateo's housing element fails to sufficiently study the problem of racial segregation, as required by state law. While the neighborhoods with a high concentration of people of color have been analyzed, the neighborhoods with a high concentration of white residents have not been studied. By failing to analyze the underlying conditions of these neighborhoods, for example, exclusionary zoning, the history of racial covenants, concentrated affluence, and so forth, the housing element also fails to propose policies and programs that will change those conditions and address the racial segregation that those neighborhoods are also experiencing. This is an egregious omission." In addition, the programs and policy solutions should include approaches that address these underlying conditions of racial segregation, such as, one, change the zoning of R1 neighborhoods to allow for more density and lower-cost homes. Also, pair investment strategies in under-invested areas with stronger anti-displacement measures to ensure low-income residents can reap the benefits of neighborhood improvements. And also, finally, propose affordable housing sites in the high-resourced neighborhoods. She says, "While much work has been done to create the housing element, it falls short of state guidelines, as well as the hopes and aspirations we should have for San Mateo, our city. There is no reason why the burden of the housing crisis we face in our communities should continue to fall on low-income people and people of color, while the windfall benefits of increased home values accrue to the largely white, wealthier parts of our community. Far from natural segregation, this is the outcome of decades of policies, and we can choose differently. Now is the time to change this pattern of segregation, unequal benefits and burdens, and create a different future for the next generations." Thank you.
Next speaker is Noel Langmac.
Hi there. I just wanted to echo many of the things that, that former callers have mentioned. I was interested when I looked at the summary and saw that the housing element summary mentioned that there would be no rezonings required to achieve. It seems like that's certainly a missed opportunity. And as others have mentioned, a missed opportunity specifically in zoning R1 neighborhoods. In addition, as Mayor Beniz mentioned, adding additional density and, and height availability would, would make it much easier to achieve the RINA goals that forward. So I would encourage including, you know, including changes in zoning in this plan to ensure that there is sufficient buffer to realistically accommodate the RINA numbers.
Thank you. Next speaker, Michael Weinauer.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Just wanted to make sure. A couple of comments here. I'll try to make it quick. I know you're running late. First of all, I'd like to thank staff for, you know, pushing back on some of the Planning Commission's comments there, which I really think go way too far. As Councilmember Benia accurately pointed out, they're using a conservative methodology here. And there are a lot of variables that you really, that are just pure conjecture at this point. And it opens us up to risks if we expand those numbers for this particular, for this particular exercise. So I for this particular exercise. So I laud them for pushing back on that and sticking to it. I wish our activist Planning Commission would focus more on some of the things that one of the earlier speakers spoke to, in terms of architectural design excellence and multifamily housing and things like that, versus trying to, you know, push that sort of an agenda. The second thing is that affordable housing, I think, is, again, has to be the focus. And contrary to what Mayor Bonilla is saying, his record of wanting to build out every corner of San Mateo was well-established. We, trickle-down housing doesn't work. I don't know how many times that needs to be repeated. It doesn't work. And you need to, the problem is that $2.3 billion that you need to come up with to fund affordable housing. We need to tackle that and target affordable housing. And then the last thing is around Measure Y. And this is your friendly reminder that, you know, there's all this talk around putting a ballot to get rid of Measure Y, and that's great, but that is, I have to remind you again, and I'll say this frequently, it has to be something that the 20,000-plus voters that supported Measure Y can get behind. So what's been missing so far has been compromise in that regard, as far as many of us are concerned. And that needs to happen, otherwise you do run the very real risk of that ballot measure failing, and then you'll see some real problems with the housing element. So, thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Sean. Let me, okay, you can now speak, Sean.
Thank you for giving this presentation. Thank you for all the work and allowing for public speakers. I just want to say that more and more I learn about, and I've been to plenty of meetings with the Housing Committee, I learn about the new projects, and I'm all favor, I am in favor of the growth as a teacher and a resident homeowner in San Mateo, teaching in San Mateo as well. I'm in favor of the growth of population. However, whenever people like myself and other residents in these meetings have brought up green space and brought up parks and forest preserves, we receive, you know, "Oh, yes, that's great, that's important," but we never actually see it in the planning. For example, on 26th Avenue by San Mateo College, there's new residential housing going up, and it's part of this plan. However, the demolition of the office buildings already started, so I imagine the plan is going forward. And the housing is given, I believe, 50% open area, 50% building. So that's a metric they're looking at. However, there's no other public park. There's not looking in between these neighborhoods why we can't increase our parks, our green spaces, our forest preserves, our bike paths. All of this stuff really needs to be considered as we grow and as we bring more people to this beautiful city. Please keep in mind, we need recreational things, more tennis courts and all of that that goes into play. Thank you very much for fielding my point.
Next speaker, Carol Eldridge. One moment. Okay, speak now.
Good evening. My name is Carol Eldridge, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking on behalf of One San Mateo, a community group that was formed to promote racial and economic equity, primarily through our advocacy for affordable housing and renter protections. In reviewing the housing element, our core interest has been its success in fulfilling the requirements of affirmatively furthering fair housing, both to reverse patterns of discrimination and to prevent displacement. I'd like to focus on a couple of constraints that we believe were inadequately discussed in the housing element. The first one is Measure Y. It's heartening to hear that staff intends to expand the discussion of Measure Y, and I hope that this expanded treatment will reveal the extent to which Measure Y is an obstacle to creating new homes, both market rate and affordable homes. Three years ago, the Council considered increasing the BMR requirement to 20%, but the economic consultants hired by the city concluded that it was not feasible, given the height and density limits of Measure Y. So this is just one instance, one illustration of how Measure Y interferes with the creation of new homes, including affordable homes, and a more robust treatment of Measure Y clearly is called for in the housing element. The second is R1 zoning. The housing element also fails to evaluate the importance of R1 zoning in creating patterns of segregation in San Mateo, both past and present. Specifically, it fails to analyze why some neighborhoods in San Mateo are predominantly affluent and white, much as Jennifer Martinez noted. This analysis is an explicit requirement of AFFH. Obviously, the explanation for this is closely tied to the design and intent of R1 zoning in the first place, and to the fact that, at the time of their formation, many of our neighborhoods contained racial covenants restricting anyone but whites from living there. These shortcomings are important because the constraints are a big part of forming the foundation for creating programs and policies. And by underplaying these constraints, the housing element fails to set forth programs and policies adequate to overcoming these important obstacles and their effect on segregating San Mateo and causing displacement. Thank you.
Our last speaker this evening is Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, Council, Honorable Mayor. Jordan Grimes, 19th Avenue Park. I'm not going to mince words tonight. This has been a thoroughly disappointing, though unsurprising discussion. In the past three decades, in the 30 years since the passage of Measure Y, San Mateo has issued building permits for around 4,000 new homes. The idea that we can adequately and realistically, and that is the key word here, realistically, create a plan for almost double that number in the next eight years without any rezoning at all, is both farcical and fundamentally unserious, especially when building costs have skyrocketed and municipalities around us now have far less ownerless zoning. Most of the myriad deficiencies with the draft element, specifically with regard to the sites inventory and constraints analysis, have already been addressed by comment on the record that will be reviewed by HCD, so I won't touch on them here. Other than to say that these exact same deficiencies have been present in scores of housing elements in the SCAG and SECOG regions, all of which have been rejected and remain uncertified, how our staff and consultant believe we won't be subjected to the same fate is a mystery to me. That I haven't heard the words "realistic capacity" or "substantial evidence for non-bakeet sites" once tonight is an indictment of efforts made thus far. On the topic of review, the housing element has historically been a rubber-stamp process. The 30 years of experience our consultant has is for a process that no longer exists, and relationships with state reviewers will not get us out of following the letter of state law, which this housing element currently does not do. Lastly, as a member of San Mateo County's Equity Advisory Group convened by 21 elements, I participated in a panel two weeks ago with HCD reviewers to share the concerns of equity and housing advocates, and open a channel to discuss the deficiencies we're seeing in housing elements locally. It unfortunately seems that we'll have a lot to discuss with them. Those San Mateans dealing with increasing cost burdens and housing insecurity deserve better. They deserve a real plan to address, ameliorate, and alleviate their suffering. My hope is that after HCD drowns this plan in red ink, we'll get one. Thank you.
We actually have a couple of more hands raised. Justin Alley, if you could unmute yourself.
Hello. Hello, Council, hello, staff. I'm Justin Alley. I am a member of One San Mateo, and I also had the privilege to participate in the Equity Advisory Group. And before I say anything more, let me just preface that everything I'm saying here are my own views and nobody else's. So as part of that Equity Advisory Group, we had the opportunity to look at a number of cities' housing elements. And you really can't paint with too broad of a brush. There were cities which actually took up the gauntlet that has been thrown down by the...
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I turned him off, and now I can't seem to turn him back on. Justin, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, I just unmuted myself.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah. So, okay. Yeah, I was just talking about how, after looking at a number of cities' housing elements, we saw some which took up the gauntlet to affirmatively further fair housing, and others which didn't. And I'm really sad to say that I would put San Mateo in that category. So looking at this housing element, and just focusing on one thing in particular, the distribution of proposed units or, you know, anticipated units in resource areas, you know, 0% or effectively 0% in the highest resource centers, 5% in high-resource centers, this is undeniably a failure. And it's undeniably a failure by the terms and guidance set down by HCD, and also by the goal of affirmatively furthering fair housing. So if our housing element runs into issues, I would not be surprised if this is one of them. And it's nobody trying to create an issue. It's right there in the report itself. And so, like others this evening, I have a hard time reading this housing element as anything other than entrenching historical patterns of segregation. You know, there was an opportunity to vigorously improve the situation. This doesn't do that. It seems like all we're doing is checking boxes, hoping that we can get it through. I think at the very least, we should do more than that, and this element, this housing element fails to do that, which I find to be very disappointing. Thank you.
And we have one more hand raised. Jeremy Levine.
Good evening, everyone. Jeremy Levine here. I am the Policy Manager for the Housing Leadership Council. I really appreciate the time the Council and the city of San Mateo is devoting to consider the housing element tonight. And I want to say really, truly thank you to everyone here, especially the public commenters, for participating. For more than 20 years, the Housing Leadership Council has helped jurisdictions throughout San Mateo County plan for new housing. We are committed to working with San Mateo, the city, to create a great housing element. We sent two letters outlining what we think the city could do to improve its housing element, some of which were about what the law requires, some of which were about just good policies that make it easier to have housing that allows more people to live in your community. So we're really committed to working with cities. We're also committed to working with the California Department of Housing and Community Development to review housing elements. They have specifically asked activists to help them understand the local context. Ideally, we hope to write letters to HCD advocating that they approve San Mateo's housing element. We do have a handful of goals for every housing element. We want the needs analysis to really recognize every unmet housing need, and to consider the trends that have led to that need. And similarly, we want the city to identify every constraint, including local ballot measures, that have been mentioned by property owners, developers, and service providers that might exist that is creating that need. The goal isn't to guilt the city or say that everything you're doing is wrong. San Mateo has done a lot right in the last few years and grown, and then really become an even better community for the new residents that have been added. But it's just to recognize that there's always ways that cities can improve, and specific policies that they can actually change in order to make it easier for more people to live there. We really want you, similarly with the constraints analysis, to take on affirmatively furthering fair housing as an opportunity to evaluate how the city can increase access to more neighborhoods. And at the end, we want you to implement great goals and programs with measurable metrics and concrete deadlines to actually remove some of those constraints and address the need. Other groups, I am under the impression, are going to be looking at your opportunity sites, trying to judge if you're really planning for where housing is going to be built. Our goal at the end of this is that not only the city of San Mateo has a certified housing element, but that you can go and pursue pro-housing designation, get extra additional resources to plan for growth. We're really trying to be partners to the city. We think San Mateo has done a great job in the past few years working to get some housing going, and we're really hoping that you can build on the great work you've already done, and plan for the next eight years. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
And that's all that we have for public speakers.
Thank you very much. In that case, I will now close the public comment period. Bring it back to the City Council. If we have any additional questions for staff, we can go ahead with that. And after that, I think you're going to put up a slide, and we can start responding to your written questions there for us. Are there any other questions? No. Everybody's ready to go ahead and look at that slide, then.
Through the chair. So we were hoping to focus the discussion on four topics. If the Council has guidance for staff on the sites inventory or the AFFH narrative, any comments on the other housing element sections, or the goals, policies, and programs, we were thinking we could go one by one. We don't have specific questions to guide the discussion, but in general, are looking for feedback on the methodology we've employed on the sites inventory and the listed sites.
And we can also provide slides for the sites inventory on the map, or the breakdown of the inventory, and then we do have all of the goals, policies, and programs that we can pull up on slides as needed as well to support your discussion.
Great, thank you. I think it looks like Councilmember Gotholz is ready.
Sure. I guess we can start with the sites inventory. It really, I remember the City Council talking about the sites for the sites inventory multiple times, and we directed our staff to use that sites inventory to guide this discussion, and I appreciate that you have stood by that, because that's what we told all of our residents we were going to do. And I know you got a lot of pushback from advocates trying to suggest that we go beyond that, and I think that we have, up to this point, and should continue to keep our commitment to residents, that the sites that we're looking at remain there. We've seen quite a bit of rhetoric going back and forth about whether we should burn it down and start from scratch with high rises everywhere, or whether we should just build a wall around San Mateo. I don't think either one of those things is going to happen. I think with affirmatively furthering the fair housing, I appreciate the steps that have been taken so far, and I wonder what else we can do to try to get that pro-housing designation. How hard is that to do? And as staff, do you feel like that is something that's achievable for us right now?
We can certainly look into that. I know Diana Elrod had to leave the meeting, so she's not available to speak to that topic, but we would certainly be happy to look at that. I do want to add that there was a comment made about discriminatory policies and CCNRs that were discriminatory in segregating certain populations out of certain areas. So staff is considering adding a program or a policy addressing that component, and we would certainly look at, you know, our policies and programs, again, to make them stronger as needed.
If we're able to get that pro-housing, it means access to more funds, doesn't it? And we talked about how, I forget how many billions of dollars it would take to meet our low-income RENA numbers, but it's a lot.
Yes, and we, the pro-housing designation is a very challenging designation to get. It's a very high bar. But we can definitely evaluate that in more detail and come back to you with more details. I do know in speaking to our prior housing manager, Sandy Council, we did talk specifically about that, and based on her assessment, that would be a very challenging bar for us to reach. But we can definitely explore that further and come back with a more detailed answer about what it would take to get there.
I just want to say thank you again for keeping our commitment to residents and really driving this conversation forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yeah, so I want to echo just what Councilmember Gotholz just said. Thank you so much to staff for your work on all this. I mean, you've been asked hundreds of questions throughout this process. You've been encouraged to go against council direction, and you've kind of stuck to your guns and stayed on that route. And I know it's not easy to do, especially in the public meetings and in Planning Commission sessions, so I really, personally, really appreciate that. And, you know, I'll just say, your whole team has been outstanding, but Zach, this might have been the best presentation and question answering session that I have seen, because these questions... Because these questions are not easy. And it's really hard to have a script of answers. And it's obvious that you've put the work into this, your whole team, not just you, but you're the one talking. So you get a little bit of the credit. And if something went wrong, you get the blame. But it's just really outstanding. In my opinion, A+. And just in short, on all these, I feel that we're on the right track. If there is anything where we're on the wrong track or we miscalculate, you know, a fluid situation with the state agencies overlooking this, we'll get back on track. And we have enough buffer so that if there is, oh, you know, this, you should slightly tweak this. You know, we have the buffer there. We decided to err on the side of a bigger buffer such that we would be able to incur little changes like that. And I also think that, you know, it's easy to just say, forget, measure why. And regardless of whether or not we personally agree with it or voted for it, we need to acknowledge that a significant portion of San Mateo residents, it's very important to them. So it's not like we can just ignore it or just plant it away. I think we need to acknowledge it. And I do think down the road, we're going to need to strike a balance, a compromise. I don't think it's either direction. I think it's somewhere in the middle. You know, and one thing I just wanted to point out, and this could just be me, but I think it's important to go on the record saying that, you know, if a single council member decided that they wanted to summarize like what was going on in a meeting and email a state agency from our city account, along with our signature being council member, and summarize a meeting, I think that my fellow council members would rightly be a little annoyed with that because it's not, we really take a lot of pains to say that like if the mayor is going to send a letter on official letterhead, that it's authorized by council. If not, you of course have the opportunity to send a private email or disclose that you're speaking as an individual, not as a council member. And I have concerns that our planning commission is kind of doing just that, sending emails directly to state agencies and not in summarizing meetings that didn't even have an official planning commission recommendation. That to me is not okay. I think that goes outside of the handbook of what a planning commissioner's role is. And even if you agree with everything in that email, I would hope that my fellow council members would at least dislike, not agree that it's okay to just be sending out emails because I think it confuses, it muddies the waters. It puts staff in an awkward position. So I just felt, I don't like speaking negatively, but I think it was really important to, I had to get that off my chest to say that. So those are all my comments right now.
Go ahead. Deputy Mayor.
Are you going?
It doesn't matter.
Okay, I'll go. All right. I wanted to echo support for aiming high to get a pro-housing designation. And I'm very curious to learn more about what kind of funding opportunities that would open up and what additional steps we need to take to get there. And I have a little bit of things to get through here. But in terms of the assessment, I did want to raise a question and sort of elevate a concern that I had about the characterization of our displacement and specifically address the incredible loss of our black community over the last half century. And so I wanted to just make sure that if we are looking at demographic trends according to racial groups, specifically in the area of North Central, there's been a very large decrease in the black population. And to me, that is a very concrete indication of displacement of a protected class. And I question the omission. I'm looking at the census tract 60-62. And so, you know, for example, in 1990, 18% of census tract 60-62 was black. And in 2017, it was down to 4%. So for me, that's a really significant and important data point to include in our narrative about displacement. And so I offer that as, you know, input and I hope it can be considered. And I did have a number of specific ideas and suggestions I wanted to go through for the policy and programs. Is that what we're going through right now? Is that appropriate? Okay. So I'll just go one at a time. So starting with H1 production. And this, oh, sorry, sorry. Starting with H1.9 to create minimum densities for mixed-use residential projects. This was something that I think came up numerous times during the land use alternative discussion. Is how, you know, our council is, I think, very consistent in our desire to make sure that commercial properties are balanced and are developed to maximize residential opportunities. And so I question the wording here because for me, the goal is to create a policy that will require mixed-use zoning to have a density requirement, not mixed-use projects. And I think that that's an important distinction to make because we want to make sure to incentivize and require mixed use to be developed with residential, not to rely on market forces that clearly favor commercial development and basically hope that whatever incentives that we provide will tip the scale to get some level of residential. So I really hope that we can get behind a rewording of this to make it very explicitly clear that we are creating a housing density requirement in mixed-use zone properties. And I've seen some models in Mountain View that I would refer us to. So for example, they have basically kind of a ratio between office development and housing development per square foot. So it's like you develop X number of commercial square feet and then that equates to some unit of housing. So I would just refer to that. And to add on to that goal, I would say that in an ideal world, we would want to graduate intensity closer to the Caltrain stations. And so if we are going to create some nuance in a policy like that, I would love to see us increase the density in surrounding the Caltrain stations for mixed use. Moving on to 1.11. I can't help but think about how SB9 has changed the landscape for R1s. But I think that that kind of has put the R2 zones into a bit of limbo and kind of flip-flopped and effectively downzoned R2s to reap less housing than R1s. I don't think that's the intent, but I believe that there is an opportunity as we create this policy to actually basically update those two together. So even if we were to create a uniform SB9 policy that would apply to R1s and R2s, I think that that would achieve at least a uniform policy that hasn't effectively downzoned R2s. So those were sort of the modifications that I wanted to raise. Then I have a couple of additional goals that I would love to discuss for consideration. One is, this was, there's been an ongoing kind of conversation with other jurisdictions, like including the San Mateo Union High School and the San Mateo Foster City School District about how we can better assess our land opportunities and do sort of a better global analysis of where there might be possible land swaps or consolidations for operational uses. And, you know, I think that there's political will and interest to do this. Where we're lacking is in a written goal and a mechanism to actually invest the money to research this idea, to, you know, to put some actual analysis and resource behind it. And so I would like to offer that as, you know, something I think deserves, is worthy of a goal. I think that, you know, given who, you know, how pro-housing and how, for example, the school district, let's just take the school district as an example, or the county are aligned in trying to create affordable housing. And we have land opportunities all within the boundaries of the city, but we don't have a starting place in terms of how do we even begin to open those conversations in a meaningful way? So that's one idea. And then another idea is in the production area is I really think that it would be so meaningful to explore some policies, incentives to create more affordable homeownership opportunities. That was a gap that I didn't see well reflected in the production goals. And I think that it's really meaningful in terms of balancing out the rental population and the homeownership population. And it really is, I think, an important strategy for addressing the missing metal. My third idea under production is to, is kind of revisiting some of the things that we talked about during the goal setting, the council goal-setting plan, which was to explore options to create affordable housing through density bonuses or affordable housing overlays, specifically trying to capture those nonprofits and faith-based organizations that own land and are wanting to build affordable housing. So, you know, I think we've talked about sort of ways of streamlining through expanded, like permitted uses. But I think that in addition to that, we would really benefit from talking specifically about affordable housing density bonuses and affordable housing overlays that will help, you know, reap the highest best use of those properties and those partners who want to create affordable housing. Okay. And another area I wanted to elevate is I think that there's a lot of, like, looking at the demographic trends and what we will be seeing in a significant increase in the senior population. I think that this is the time for us to also prioritize production of senior housing. So I wanted to make sure that we're elevating senior housing as a specific area of production to meet what we know will be coming, like the silver tsunami. Another one is evaluate parking standards, specifically those that are in close proximity to Caltrain and commercial areas. And the last one under production is to evaluate existing codes and amend those that may constrain production of micro units and tiny homes. So those are the ones under H1. And then moving on to H3, protection. I wanted to, I wanted to kind of add on or maybe add an entirely new goal under 3.2. So investigate fair housing cases. So we saw in the reports that 1.3% of renters in San Mateo are reporting, have reported lacking a kitchen or lacking plumbing. And that 14% of renters are afraid to ask for their, you know, repairs to be made for fear of retaliation. And so to me, it seems like there's a need to create some kind of mechanism or oversight body that will ensure that we have accountability and compliance. And so there are ways to do that, like for example, creating like a fair housing oversight committee that would be charged with reviewing cases, like for example, the red tag cases, and give people, renters, who may have received a, you know, a rent increase that's, you know, out of state compliance or an eviction notice during COVID, during a moratorium, that they would have a place to go within the city that doesn't, you know, doesn't push them into the court system. So I would like us to think about creating some layer of support to renters that will, that will address this very clear need. Number 3.7. I was really happy to see the inclusion of this goal to, and specifically, like there were a number of goals that talked about how we want to support homeless housing. I guess I would just say that I would like to expand on this a little bit, specifically to call out the student homelessness crisis. I think that there's a really urgent need to look at how we can partner with our local college campuses to mitigate student homelessness and specifically through the creation of a safe parking ordinance. And I would also, you know, go a step further and suggest that we explore ways of updating our codes to allow ministerial approval of safe parking sites, shelters, and supportive housing projects. I think those are areas of community need. It was one of, you know, affordable housing and addressing the homelessness crisis, knowing that just, you know, just today in the newspaper, we've seen a 20% increase in homelessness in this county. And we know that that's top of mind in terms of what our community needs and is asking for. And when we talk about what we can do, what's within our control is we can help streamline those processes. And so I would say that, you know, that is one of the most effective ways that we can do that is by granting ministerial approval. And a new idea is to look at, and I really appreciate the comment from, who was it? There was a number of public comments that talked about architectural design standards. Oh, I think that was Tom Taper. Anyway, so he was raising how, you know, we do want to see beautiful buildings. And I totally agree. I want to see beautiful buildings in San Mateo. And one of the ways that we can ensure that, you know, the beautiful buildings that we have stay in our community is by developing specific objective design standards for our historic district. standards for our historic district. And, um, and I would say that that's something that we probably want to tackle. And, um, and there are ways, uh, you know, there's definitely best practices and models out there, um, that involve like preservation of the outer skin and setbacks for any, um, for any building that goes above, you know, the height of the original structure. And so I think that that's something that we want to talk about, um, and address. All right. Getting, moving forward, um, under, um, H five, the affirmatively furthering fair housing, um, this is just, I hope, a small tweak and suggestion for our policy five point two, point two. We, we listed a number of incentives that we could provide to developers. And I just noticed one omission that I think should be added in, which is, um, which is granting concessions. So we listed, you know, fee waivers and subsidies and density bonuses. And there were a number of like very specific things that we were offering, but for some reason, I think concessions wasn't added and I would just like to throw that in. And under policy five point two, point three, um, they're prioritizing city funding proposals for city-funded affordable housing. Um, I, I would, you know, maybe add an objective or maybe, um, augment this one to specifically seek federal and state funding opportunities through the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority and the Bay Area Preservation Pilot to promote housing preservation policies and pilot programs. So, you know, just in this last budget cycle, there was over $20 million for housing preservation. And I think that it's worthy of a specific call out to go after that kind of funding, which is, um, which is coming down the pipeline. And, um, and lastly, uh, I will, I will say that I think that, um, under the, um, under the affirmatively furthering fair housing, what I would like to propose is that we create a language access policy for all AFFH community outreach efforts. You know, our community needs assessment show that 8.5% of the population in the city has limited English proficiency. Um, and we did have a specific call outs for some bilingual efforts in the goals, in specific goals, but I think that it would be really beneficial to create, um, a, a language access policy for, that cuts across all of the AFFH community outreach efforts so that we have one standard policy that applies to all of them, um, just so that we're not missing anything. That is, those are my notes. And I guess I do have one kind of lingering question because I think, you know, we, we heard from the carpenters union, um, about local hire and apprentice program incentives. And I guess I'm, there's certainly, you know, a nexus between labor and jobs and, you know, and housing and, you know, creating good jobs and making sure that we have a pipeline of labor to actually produce the housing that we need in the community. And so I'm, I'm just, I guess I'm kind of curious what, um, what mechanisms exist and like, is the housing element an appropriate place to address the labor shortage? And this like, it's sort of, you know, we're on a vicious cycle here of like not having enough housing, not having enough labor. So I'm, I'm curious to hear from you all what, um, what you've seen in the way of models to address that and if this is the appropriate place to, to discuss it.
Through the mayor, I can provide a brief response if you'd like.
Thank you.
So the housing element could be, I, I think this is a challenging topic. We would definitely need to investigate further. I think specifically enforcement, um, and when that occurs would require some careful thought, um, because we wouldn't want to see projects halfway through the process and then stall because maybe there, the right labor that was needed for that project wasn't available in the, um, as required if we had a specific ordinance or requirement. So we could definitely investigate that further. Um, I don't know if it's best placed in the housing element. As we did notice, note, there is increased accountability for housing element policies, or if maybe it's better placed in a different element within the general plan. But if there's interest on the council's part, we can explore that further.
Okay. Other comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll just be brief. Um, you know, I think that, first of all, I, I would concur with the compliments that have been expressed tonight. In reviewing the staff report and all the attachments, uh, it was a yeoman's effort, there's no doubt about it. And you were tremendously prepared tonight to handle any question that came your way. So I really appreciate it because, uh, there was so much discourse that came before us to get to this point, um, whether they be years or long meetings. And, um, I'm really grateful that we are where we are in a pretty comprehensive fashion. So my feeling about what's been proposed is that I think it gets us, sorry, my voice is totally gone. Um, it gets us the greatest, um, opportunity for the greatest number of housing units that we need yesterday. So I'm very pleased to see what we've seen tonight and I recognize that this is about capacity. We're not talking about whether or not things are economically feasible, but within the housing element, we must establish capacity. And I have seen the capacity and I'm excited about it because we do need the housing yesterday, volumes of housing yesterday. So I think this is a good methodical way, uh, to approach it. And what I'm ultimately hopeful for is that when the housing element gets approved, it leads to perhaps some state funding for affordable housing. And it leads to perhaps some state funding for the infrastructure needed to support the housing. So I'd like to see this get submitted as soon as we can. I recognize there have been some additional comments and, um, I'm certain we can incorporate some of them rather expeditiously. And, um, I just want to congratulate you again. This was, um, I watched it from afar along the process and, um, I'm very grateful for the expertise that you've put into it. I really am. I think the citizens of San Mateo, um, or the residents should be grateful as well. So thank you.
And? Councilmember Reddick?
I gave my comments.
You made your comments?
Yep.
Councilmember Gorthos, you've made yours?
I'll add just-
Yeah, sure.
Just add a little bit, which is where I started. The stakes are very high. We don't want to lose local control. And I appreciate how much work staff has put in. But we are on, we are on a track to get our, our housing element approved and a general plan approved so this, so that the, the development can actually take place and so that we actually have the housing available to our community. And I think that's what's important. And what I was afraid of in this process was, uh, that we could see a failure. And, and if the housing element failed, if the general plan failed, that housing doesn't come to fruition, people aren't being housed in San Mateo. And so to the extent that staff has kept us on track so that those things can get approved, so that this, um, council can move the ball forward, uh, that general plan needs to be approved so that we can build the housing we know that we need. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Councilmember Gorthos, I guess that leaves me. Your microphone's on. I keep looking because your microphone's on. Okay, thanks. Well, I want to thank also, I know it's been, and it's not over with, a long and arduous process. And it's not simple. It's much more, uh, detailed and many more requirements than have been in previous, uh, housing elements. And it seems as though many people are hanging on every detail of it. And I think that just illustrates how important it is to this community. Really, there's a lot that's gone on with whether or not we can be able to build the housing that's needed for people that work in San Mateo, people whose families have grown in San Mateo, uh, people who want to see their kids or their grandkids live someplace either in or near San Mateo, um, people that have come here for jobs because we live in California and that's, the constant in California is change. We see jobs, we see new industries, we see everything growing and changing all the time in California. It's just who we are, it's what we are. San Mateo has been very lucky to be centrally located in a nice, what was a suburban area between a couple of large, uh, urban centers. And now those urban centers have grown together. We are in the 21st century and everything is up for grabs, it seems. And many things, in many people's opinions are frightening, I think. People are afraid of change and people have a lot of fear because fear is something that's being stirred up by a lot of forces out there that think they'll benefit by further dividing people and creating more fear. So I'm here to say that we as San Mateans need to come together. We need to figure out how to do what we need to do. We've had some historic problems with, I think, not building enough housing. We've had a housing shortage for quite a while. We took one big step when we sought to, uh, uh, when we did the Bay Meadows, both phases, phase one and, and phase two, which is still being built, uh, actually started working on that 21 years ago when I was a member of that committee. This shows you how long some of these changes and some of this growth can take. But that said, we have a task right before us tonight. And I know that I just heard three members here tonight say clearly they want to see it go forward pretty much the way it is, with just a couple of, uh, uh, you know, minor considerations, I think. One council member over there had some more detailed suggestions and is asking, uh, for some additional attention. I don't think that attention is really major attention that, that should cause big disruption in the flow of the process to getting our housing element in. I'm going to say that I'm going to go through the list here a little bit here. I do agree with some of what the other council member brought up. Um, but first I'm going to just go through and comment first on, um, what I was looking at on slide 38, which was where it said that near freeways, this is where the, the subject of units within 500 feet of freeways 101 or 92 can be built with mitigations. And so I'm wondering, I think, I think we need to know what those mitigations are. Do we have any idea what those mitigations are? Clearly the subject there is air quality, right? So-
Yeah, the primary, so I mean, you're looking at, there's also noise. You, you have to maintain certain indoor noise levels. So you might, um, you, you look at maybe triple pane windows, you look at the, the HVAC system and how it's filtered. So a lot of it would be, um, project specific. We'd have to look at its location. There's a number of factors that would be evaluated through the, the site development and then ultimately the environmental review process. So, um, we could come back and elaborate on what those might be, but each project site, depending on where it's located, its proximity, the mitigations might be slightly different. But in general, you're looking at indoor noise and air quality.
Okay. But I think we have what's being referred to in a more modern way as sensitive receptors and quite often that's children, right? So I think that if you double up the windows and you insulate the walls extra heavily and you put in better filtration system, what does that do for kids that need to play outside?
Part of that, um, evaluation be looking at where your, um, outdoor open space is placed. So maybe you can use the building as a buffer and place open space at the, the furthest areas from, um, the highway. But yeah, I, I think each project site would require individual evaluation to determine the best way to address those type of circumstances.
Okay. I just, just wanted to ask about that. I, um, I understand that we had, uh, some comments from the public, um, wide range, I think we could say, and some, you know, support and some down the middle and some others, um, maybe calling for a lot more work to be done that they feel many, many members of the public, and not many, many, but some members of the public feel like we could do better. And, um, certainly the issue of historical segregation and discrimination is one I think that we, we should try to look a little more closely at. It was raised by, uh, Councilwoman Lee. We do have historical issues with displacement, which continues to this day. And we have, uh, historical issues with having certain parts of the city that, uh, were built for only certain people. And now that those certain codicils and deed, uh, uh, encrusted requirements are gone, somehow the job has been done there and those areas are still exclusionary to certain groups of people. And, um, uh, I think we need to do more to look at how we can work. And I know that's what SB nine is supposed to help with and SB 10. But it doesn't really, I think, go far enough to address the real, actual issues of why things are the way they are. I got something else I highlighted back here that I'm looking for. So I like the idea of aiming high, which Councilwoman Lee mentioned. I do think that we should, I always think that we should seek to do better than what the minimum requirement is or what the minimum is that's being asked of us. And, um, I would like to see us be able to submit a housing element that is the best effort we can possibly make and that has a good chance of actually being approved. You know, after one round of HCD looking at it and sending it back. And that's just me. I think that we can do that, right? And I think we should just, you know, look closer. I don't think it'll take that much more time. But, um, I think that with a little more research and some additional, um, consideration of certain issues, we can do that. So on the, the issues that Councilwoman Lee brought up, the issue H 1.9, uh, with the minimum densities for mixed use residential developments, I agree. That should be mixed use developments in general. Additionally, uh, H 1.1 SB nine adopt an ordinance on R1 and R2. That only makes sense to me because I heard where Palo Alto was trying to get around our, our, uh, SB, um, SB nine by zoning everything R2, right? I, and I think it's, it's, uh, it would leave, uh, R2s at a disadvantage. So I think we should just seek to, um, actually expand that. And I see you, Councilmember Lee, would like to make a comment on that. Go ahead.
So just from, from a conversation process standpoint, my understanding is that we need to kind of, um, we're like, treat this exercise kind of like we do the blue sky session where, you know, if we want to look at any additional, um, sort of tweaks or, um, or additional policies to include, that, you know, we could list them one by one and then go through and see if there's council consensus. So, you know, if we could start from the top, I'd be happy to drive and then see where council is. Does that, does that make sense?
No, I, I think you already went through your stuff, Councilwoman Lee, and everybody else here seems to think they've, they've made their comments. So I'm just going to go ahead and make my comments and I think, uh, you can add more if you'd like when, when I'm finished.
Oh, sure. Okay.
Yeah. Additionally, um, there is going to be a silver tsunami and I'm a member of that group. And I do think that senior housing is something that is definitely in need of, uh, incentivized production. And I know that I got, I was contacted recently by a group of people from the Rotary, the San Mateo Rotary, who are looking for an opportunity. In fact, I think they found a building they're looking at over on, um, over on, um, Burrell that, um, they would like to be able to make some progress on. There was a building available there. I think we should, you know, we don't have to focus on that building at all, but we should focus on trying to ma- make sure we're incentivizing and making it well known that we do want to have more affordable senior housing. The comments from Mr. Tabor at the beginning of the meeting regarding architecture, I do think that we can try and call for some higher standards of architecture. I see, um, and I don't want to actually cast any aspersions on any existing buildings, but I think we could do better, especially in the downtown area. And, uh, that's kind of where I'll leave it. I would just like to encourage further discussion, trying to get a higher quality of architecture there. The carpenters sent a letter and as a member of the carpenters, I would be remiss if I didn't address it. So they suggest that they can help us with lots of different things, but the main thing that we know and I know as a member of the Association of Bay Area Governments Regional Planning Committee is that we don't just have a housing shortage, we also have a worker shortage. Construction workers are, um, have left the industry. It's a lot of very hard, dirty, dangerous work. The pay for most people engaged in residential work is not good. They lack opportunities for training. Uh, the carpenters and other unions, but mostly the carpenters right now are saying, look, we have world-class training. We have collectively bargain agreements that will attract workers. We, uh, our employers are subject to this collective bargaining agreement whereby they pay for healthcare, for family-serving healthcare, where they provide a pension and where the workers are taken care of because they have representatives who actually visit job sites and make sure it's a safe place to work. And safety on the construction site is really number one. I've said that many times. Um, so I know this may not be the time or place for us to look at that, but I think it's important that the carpenters send us that communication, offering help, and we should look for an opportunity to engage them with that. Beyond that, I have just a couple more things to say here. Beyond that, I have just a couple more things to say here. So I want to say that I want the housing element to succeed, uh, unlike what I think one of the callers' opinion was. And I want it to succeed soon. I want us to get it done in a timely manner. And I want it to be good. I want it to be quality. So, um, I don't think it's where we change zoning. We do that in the general plan update. So I know what we're talking about now is capacity, as Deputy Mayor said. But I need to say, while we're talking a lot about affordable housing, I've been really thinking about this and I've been talking with a lot of people because affordable housing is great and we need it right now. But we really have to finish the thought because right now what we have is an affordable housing revolving door. We have low wages that people living on those low wages are, are not sustainable in whatever their housing is, uh, their housing arrangement, they're living on a slippery slope. Quite often, uh, they might go unemployed or the boss might tell them, "I don't need you for the next week or two," right? And they can't pay the rent. In the meantime, they're already struggling at 16 bucks an hour to pay for groceries, to be able to take care of everything the kids need done because people have kids. So we need to figure out how we can do better. What I know is that, uh, when housing is needed, it's good, but we have to stop blindly accepting that low wages and poverty, housing and food instability, and I'm reading this right now because I want to make sure I don't forget a thing, okay? Lack of healthcare and just, just plain facts of life. They are not, these things are not just plain facts of life. They happen because people aren't being paid enough to live. It's known that in San Mateo County, it costs an individual to have a modern, a moderate standard of living 36 bucks an hour. Where you have apartments that, the one-bed, or studio apartments that are $2,000 a month, you can't pay for that on 16 bucks an hour. It just doesn't add up. So these needs, uh, um, for housing, okay, for affordable housing are being met through lots of different ways. The county has stepped up, we've stepped up, we need to do better and we know that. But when people go through this program where they get the initial, if they accept the help, they go to the housing, there are programs to help them, some counseling, maybe some substance abuse help, maybe some job training, things to help them get back on their feet, mental health assistance, that's fine. But if they finish and they figure the, 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 um, facility, whatever it is, says, "Okay, well, you're ready to go out on your own," and they go out and the job is paying 16 dollars and change an hour, it's going to be a short amount of time before they're back to needing help again. Okay? We really, in this county, in this city, and all across the Bay Area, need to take a look at how we can change this and make it so that people can actually survive. It's inhumane to have people constantly being kicked out, families losing their homes, kids not having enough food to eat. So we can demand that jobs require safety and quality, productivity training. We can demand that jobs provide cost of living relevant wages. We can demand that they provide healthcare, local hiring, and a pension. We can do this because we have to stop the revolving door of homelessness. And I want to say, let's seriously consider the issues raised by the letter from the carpenters again because they're offering real help. And those are my comments here. I know that it's probably going to be submitted pretty much as is, but I hope we're going to be able to make some, some changes based on comments you heard from council here tonight. And unless anybody has anything else to add, please, go ahead.
So on the pro-housing designation, in the dialogue with HCD, I'd love to hear what they think we can do to reach that, to, to reach that threshold. This is going to be an ongoing conversation, so something that we can continue to pay attention to. And if you bring it back to us and we know exactly what we need, maybe we can get it across the goal line.
I need to add my support to that comment, too.
So it sounds like we could add a policy or a program to that effect to investigate the feasibility of gaining that pro-housing designation for the city? Through the, a couple of, um, for the direction in general, um, this is really good for staff to work off of and, and update the, um, housing element. There were a couple of new policies or programs proposed by Councilwoman Lee. We would just want to confirm that there is council consensus before we move forward on those. It sounds like there is consensus on including R 2 in the R 1 discussion when we look at SB 9. It sounds like there's interest in, in prior, in including a policy or program that looks at how we could prioritize or, um, encourage senior housing. There was a proposal about looking at micro-units, tiny homes. That would likely be a new policy or program, and I don't know if there is council interest in including that or having staff, um, look at how that could take shape.
I think we've got nothing to lose. Just take that as where I'm coming from. Yeah, I would be open to that. I just want to comment that those kind of sites require a lot of infrastructure. You still have to bring plumbing, electrical, everything has to come to it for all just those tiny units. And it's only so many units you can squeeze onto a piece of land. It's better to have a building where, once you bring all that infrastructure, you have more actual durable structure there, in my opinion. But, but I'm not against tiny houses and...
No, we'll take that into consideration.
And interim, and interim use, I just don't know that we have the land for that in San Mateo, so.
Excuse me, if you can turn on your mic. All those comments have not been heard, so you'll have to start over. It will not be picked up. Sorry.
Sorry, Joan. Um, so I was just commenting on the, the micro-unit idea being, um, sometimes micro-units can, can be an ineffective addition of density when, um, when, when it's just one story, the tiny homes and things like that. But when you're adding micro-units that, um, that are able to add to the units per acre, that's an effective use of, of density where, um, I guess I would be in favor of the more effective density on a smaller footprint, whereas if you're talking about tiny homes taking up a larger, uh, area, you're actually losing outdoor space, for example. Those are my thoughts.
Yeah. Unless it's someplace where we have, you know, empty space that's waiting for another use, it could be an interim use, right? But somebody would have to pay a lot of money to get all that infrastructure put in there, so.
No, I think, I think you're right. In concept, it sounds good, and then when you get down to the, the technicalities of it, it may not be quite as practical.
So there, there were a couple of things, like, I just wanted to get a read on folks about the clarification for mixed-use zoning instead of mixed-use projects. Um, that's an important distinction. I think we've talked about how, um, we don't have any assurance, like, we've, we have, in the general plan process, um, we, in our land use discussions, a significant number of, um, of lots have been, are proposed to be rezoned as mixed-use and without any guarantee that they will actually be developed as residential, although we're relying significantly on residential development to meet our RENA goals. So I think crafting a policy to create a minimum, uh, housing density requirement for mixed-use zone properties instead of mixed-use projects is a distinction that will ensure that we actually get some housing production on mixed-use. I just want, that's, that's, um, are we then, or is council with me on that one?
So I appreciate you re-explaining that. That one completely missed me the first time. Um, and I, I think that that's an important distinction and one that, um, I'd like to see staff bring back to us.
Um, and then there was another idea that we discussed.
Hold on, hold on, I think you got another comment.
I was just going to say, I agree with looking into that.
And I support that, too.
Awesome. So, and then one of the other new ideas was to, um, was to partner with the county and neighboring jurisdictions to, to assess, um, land development opportunities. So we don't currently have that as a goal. We don't have a mechanism to even explore that kind of partnership. We haven't done the analysis. Um, and, and so starting with, you know, an analysis and assessment and looking at where those partnership opportunities might lie, I think is an important goal that we could set.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
So I don't, I don't understand how that's not a goal. Kiku Crossing is a perfect example of a success of that. We had to partner with multiple agencies in order to make Kiku Crossing work, and I think that the school districts are another one. And, uh, we've already been engaging in this, so to articulate it in writing in the housing element is not a, not a bad thing.
I agree.
Great. And then the, the another one that was, that hadn't been addressed specifically was the, um, the incentivizing home ownership, affordable home ownership production. That's not currently explicitly, um, described in our goals. So I'm, I'm proposing we add it if there's interest.
Please expand on that.
Yeah, what would those incentives consist of?
We would explore what policies and incentive opportunities there are to create more affordable home ownership opportunities. So that's, I mean...
Ownership.
The idea is that we want to create a mix of rental and home ownership, um, units in the, in the affordable housing, you know, landscape. And so by, um, by specifically researching what those policy incentives could be, that is, you know, a way of, of, um, of supporting more production in those, in that type of affordable unit.
I'm fine with that.
I think Waters Park is a perfect example of, of how you do that, where you're converting a, an old office park into, uh, for-sale housing. There's other ways of encouraging condominiums as opposed to apartment buildings, I think would also be good.
Great.
I agree.
Um, and then, um, we, we had talked about this in, during the strategic goal-setting session, which was to explore options to create more affordable housing through a density bonus or, uh, affordable housing overlay for nonprofit and faith-based organizations. Um, and this was one of the strategic goals that we talked about, that we kind of kicked to this process. We said, "Okay, well, we don't, we're, you know, this is important, but we'll address it during the housing element today. It is the housing element." So I, um, I hope we don't miss this chance to specifically call on our partners that are eager to develop affordable housing and support them to do so.
I just caution a little bit if the area is not zoned for it. Um, I'm willing to explore it and put the word "explore" in the housing element.
Great.
But we'd have to take a look at it. You know, some of these, I, I know we've explored some of them before and they just weren't quite feasible where they were located. I, I love the intent behind it, but, um, it wasn't quite feasible, so.
Well, we've explored individual. I think if we make it some writing in the housing element, it'll attract more attention and we might actually see some positive outcome.
And to the mayor, if I, if I may briefly, so in the strategic objectives, um, this aspect was, was geared towards the nature of the land itself as opposed to the individual property owner, whether it's a faith-based organization or, or some other entity. So I would just encourage similar phrasing so that it wasn't geared towards the nature of the property owner.
Okay. So however that should be worded.
How would you phrase that?
Well, I think in the final adopted strategic objectives, it, it focused on properties, maybe adjacent, properties that were adjacent to one another, say a parking lot that was adjacent to, uh, an assembly use, where those properties perhaps could be jointly developed, such as properties, um, owned by maybe a faith-based organization such as, such as a church next to a parking lot. So I think it was used as an example as opposed to the, the objective being geared towards the nature of the property owner.
Right. So also, but, but she used the word "nonprofit" and you're saying "faith-based." Is, is faith-based what you think we should be saying, or?
No, I think it's the other way around. I think instead of...
Just look for those opportunities.
Looking at the, those types of sites, whether it's owned by a nonprofit, a faith-based group, or some other kind, type of organization, you're looking at the nature of the property.
We're counting on you to get the language right, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
Great. And then, um, I think we were all in consensus about the senior housing. Yes?
Senior housing, yes.
Yes, thumbs up. Okay. And then, um, evaluate parking standards that are in close proximity to caltrain and/or commercial areas.
I think that's worthwhile. In fact, I'm in favor of reducing parking standards in those areas, so, yeah.
We'll look at that, but that, that is already a policy in the housing element, but we'll make sure it's encompassing all of the feedback.
Yeah, I know there's been legislation for a couple of years trying to do that, too, so.
Yeah, it's not particularly new. Okay, go ahead. What else?
Great. Um, and then, you know, we're moving on to the protection goal. We, I discussed, um, the, the need to create some sort of support to renters that, um, that may be, um, caught up in the red tag ordinance violations or have received a, um, you know, a, a rent increase that's not, you know, inconsistent with state law, and the opportunity to create a fair housing oversight committee. So looking at what kind of, or, you know, that's the one example, but basically looking at what are some, some structures that the city can put in place to, um, to provide more oversight and accountability and support better compliance with, you know, to support renters.
I'm not interested in establishing a separate entity for that. And I think for purposes of habitability, we already have, um, code enforcement. So I, I don't want to see city resources dedicated to that. That's just my opinion. I think we have the legal system in place for that.
I think even in the way that you're describing it as another layer makes it sound more like a bureaucracy and less like something would help renters. And I, I feel like this city council's been very strong in our support of renters. Even last week, I think we saw, uh, a landlord who didn't want to come before this body, so that makes sense.
Okay, moving on.
Oh, I want to add on.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, we have been supportive of renters that have been caught up in code enforcement issues, right? However, we still have the issue, I think it's on our, uh, work, um, program for this coming fiscal year of figuring out how we can help renters with some renter protections, right? So I think that, that what you're talking about can be part of that discussion when it comes back to us because we're looking, we're going to be having some work done on that and we'll be looking at it and talking about it.
Thank you. All right. So then in, um, goal 3.7, the addition of, um, you know, in addition to exploring safe parking ordinance, the call-out to prioritize, um, the student homelessness crisis and potential partnership opportunities with local college campuses. And then potentially to, um, explore updating codes to allow ministerial approval for safe parking site shelters and supportive housing projects.
I mean, I think it gets difficult when you're dealing with another jurisdiction in its own land. So, and I know that there has been state legislation as it deals with the junior colleges and, um, allowing vehicles, uh, for students to park, and I think that's addressing that need. So I don't know, I'm not, I don't want to be a naysayer, but I just don't see the, the city needing to get involved in that because community colleges have control over their own land to make it happen.
I, did you have comments?
I was going to say, I agree with Councilmember Papin.
I agree with Councilmember Papin. I think that we, this council has addressed, um, living in cars as being a very dangerous and unhealthy thing that we want to try to avoid. Uh, it's, it's not a solution to housing, and to the extent that we still have the capacity to, to house people in houses rather than cars, that's the direction we should be headed in. And it makes it very difficult on enforcement and it's a slippery slope.
So I just want to comment that I know that in some other jurisdictions, they have, I don't know about housing, oh, I mean, overnight parking of cars. I agree that it sounds like there's a problem when you have to go to the bathroom. But, um, I know that there are jurisdictions that have implemented places where campers and motorhomes can be, uh, positioned, which have containment tanks for those kinds of things that people do. And, um, I, I agree that the, the, if, if this is a problem for students at the community college, community college should be looking at that. However, and I don't see a lot of campers on our streets or motorhomes on our streets. If I saw that, I would be saying that we need to find a place within the park and create some space for that. But I don't see that. So I'm not sure that there, we need to really do anything about that now.
Okay. Thank you. And then another idea for consideration is, um, developing objective design standards for the historic districts.
Sorry, objectives for what?
Objective design standards for, specifically for the historic districts.
Oh. Oh, objective design standards in the historic district.
Is that something we do in the housing element, or we do that in the general plan? I'm not adverse to it, I just don't know, what's protocol?
That's a good question.
I thought that would be in the downtown general plan.
We do, well, we are moving forward with objective design standards for multifamily and mixed-use projects. We could look at it, objective design standards for historic buildings would be somewhat challenging, because oftentimes what you need to do with a historic building is specific to that particular building, its architecture, its attributes, its character-defining features. So we could investigate that, and that, yeah, it might be best rolled into when we update our downtown-specific plan. We could look at how best to address it.
And that will happen within this RENA cycle?
It will happen, it would be one of the action items, once we update, complete our general plan update, we would move forward and be updating our various specific plans, including the downtown-specific plan, to align.
Okay, well, I think it's worthwhile to have a call-out, that, you know, there's so much community support to build, you know, an aesthetically beautiful downtown and preserve the historic features that we have and assets that are, you know, make downtown so unique. So I personally think that this is something that's worth being very explicit about. Okay, so then, there's a small amendment to 5.2.2, which is incentivizing developers through direct subsidies, fee waivers, density bonuses, et cetera, et cetera. There is one word that was not included, which is concessions. So I would just suggest that we add that, because it's one of...
I thought that one related to, were you talking about relating to preservation? Didn't you want preservation in there?
Oh, I moved on from preservation.
Can you put the slide up for that one, please?
So I was, I didn't, if we want to go back to the objective design standards for the historic district?
No, 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 I thought you wanted incentives for preservation, is what you were adding on that one, if I recall. No?
Incentives for preservation.
On the one you're talking about right now?
Oh, no, that was 5.2.3, the next one. So 5.2.2 is adding the word concessions, which I guess, I'm guessing it was just an omission.
Yeah, that would add just a little.
So those would be concessions from the city, like, we wouldn't charge certain fees?
Or allow certain things.
Oh, I see.
Right.
Okay, that's fine. What else you got?
All right, so, and yes, the next one is the housing preservation. So 5.2.3 is specifically calling out the priority of seeking federal and state funding opportunities for housing preservation. So for example, through the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority and the Bay Area Preservation Pilot, with a goal to promote housing preservation policies and pilot programs.
Yes. Yes.
Great.
All right.
And then the last one is to create a language access policy for all of the AFFH community outreach efforts, so that we have one uniform policy that applies to all AFFH efforts. So instead of specifically, you know, I just, we have, there are times when we miss language access opportunities, and so if we have one overarching goal that applies to all of our AFFH objectives, specifically for our community outreach, I think that it would just create a more uniform approach.
Is that something you mandate in a housing element? And I have two questions. Is it something you mandate in a housing element? And number two, is it feasible?
Generally, with our outreach efforts, we try to focus on who we anticipate at the meeting, we want to make sure it's fully accessible, but depending on what the topic matter, where it's going, there might be different requirements we would want to prioritize. We would probably focus on tailoring it, depending on what we, the activity and what we're looking to achieve.
I see.
And if I could add to that through the mayor, so Policy H4.4 talks about enabling affirmative marketing and including Spanish marketing materials or bilingual interpretation services, so we could look at strengthening that language as well.
I agree with that.
So my feeling is, while well-intended, I'm not sure a mandate is what I'm looking for. I appreciate the tailoring to the particular event, but that's just me.
Does AFFH not cover that question?
It does, and it is something we are prioritizing, as noted here, and other aspects, I believe we note that as well, and also with our Goal 4, which talks about, the overarching intent of that is to try to engage all facets of our community. So that is somewhat implicit in the goal, if not explicit with that language access, but I think that's the overarching intent of that goal. So in many ways, I think that's probably, unless there's specific language to change, I think the intent of that goal is inclusive of what Councilmember Lee is seeking here.
So Policy 4.4 is what we were looking at?
Yeah. I just, when I look at, for example, Policy 4.1, update the housing webpage, it does not specifically call, oh, no, it does, presented in multiple languages. Okay, so maybe I missed it. So if you feel like this is achieved implicitly through our approach, then I'm totally fine dropping it.
Yeah, I think it looks like 4.4 is pretty comprehensive.
Okay, then I withdraw. Thank you so much for going through each of those with me.
Okay. Okay, staff, how do you feel?
We've got a lot of good direction to work off of here.
Okay, good.
A lot of gratitude, a lot of gratitude to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to everybody here tonight, public who participated. Thank you all. Have a good night.